All right, so we'll call to order the regular meetings being in Board of Education for our Monday, August 28th. If I could ask you everybody, please stand on site to pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome back, everybody. I'm sure we're off to a quick start to the school year already. Let me just ask first for a roll call.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Pat Grudy.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Booth.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Matt Thurman.
Here. Okay, so we know that everybody's here. Our agenda today, we'll open up for public comment. We do have a brief educational presentation regarding educated professional learning and innovative student learning. We have the president's report where we'll be taking action on Superintendent Lee's contract. Not on the agenda that we want to add is the update from our student school reps. That was an omission by mistake. The superintendent's report will follow. The consent vote agenda, we'll ask to approve that, which was reviewed earlier in the month. Updates from program and personnel and facilities and finance. There's a property dispute, Scott, is there?
No.
Okay, and seat all?
Uh, no, we didn't leave anyone's seat.
Okay, and IA speech, Jim?
Nothing new, sir.
Okay, and then we will have an executive session tonight. Two matters, employment of employee, five items, CS 120 slash 2C1. And then collective negotiating matters, five items, CS 120 slash 2C2. And we do anticipate taking action after that meeting this evening. Okay? Any, anything else? All right, so let's open it up. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak tonight? Please just state your name and address. And I ask, please leave your comments to about three minutes.
Three minutes. Lane Hasbrook, 5450 Fairmont Road, Libertyville, Illinois. Here to address the superintendent's contract. This morning, when I checked to try to review the materials, there was nothing posted on the D-128 website. I checked again this evening on my way over here, and all of a sudden, all the files are there. So if something I say is reflected in the files, they just weren't there for me to review this morning. It's an interesting issue, the superintendent's contract. As you know, the Chicago Tribune found it unusual what the board is proposing to do. We were here last month and a lot of public comment. You've had the benefit of the Chicago Tribune article. I expected there to be an update analysis from the board answering a lot of those questions. To my knowledge, there's no analysis. So as I stand here today, I've got the same issues I had last month. Why five years? Now, I know the board has backed itself into a corner. It has to extend the superintendent's contract now. But one year would be a good compromise. What about the cost? Last month, I identified that you cannot and have not identified how much this contract costs. There's all kinds of subpayments in the contract for which there's no dollar amount. Still no cost. I find it mind-boggling that you can vote on a contract when you don't know how much it costs. What is the justification for some of the contract provisions that are not present in the private sector, such as two retirement plans? Again, no analysis. There's a procedural issue I didn't talk about last month because I hope the board would address it itself, but apparently is not going to. There are two board members who, by all right, should be abstaining from voting on this contract, given the pending legal proceedings that are inexorably tied to the superintendent's office. There is a solution here this evening. You can vote on a one-year contract. You can strip out a lot of the extras that aren't present in the private sector. Then you can start now to do a full analysis for next year. Again, my comments are all process-driven. They are not about the person. None of my comments have addressed whether this is the right superintendent or the wrong superintendent. It's purely process. And if I understood the agenda right, you're going to vote on this on consent without even a public discussion. Not the way to do it.
Okay, so let me just clarify. It is not being done under the consent vote agenda, okay? So, you know, once again, I found myself having to correct the facts, all right? So let's be clear. It's under the president's report. It's duly noted. It is not part of the consent vote agenda.
Had it been posted this morning when I was on the train trying to prepare for this, I wouldn't have said that. But I have a screenshot from this morning that there was one thing and one thing only posted on the D-128 Board of Education website, and that was the notice of the meeting. So I can't be held accountable for things you don't post.
I saw them over the weekend.
Yeah, so I don't know. I looked out there today. It was probably noon time or so. Okay, so let's move on.
Tim Anderson, 821 Bartlett Terrace. I also had that problem last Friday when only the agenda, it should have been at the agenda, the notice of the meeting was. This morning, later on, much after the, probably around 10:30, I was able to find all the other documents. But that's not the issue. The issue is, and again, it's the process. You're voting on a contract for the superintendent. And it is going to be presented by the president, who knows he was able to win the election because, according to a grand jury, he was placed on the ballot through a criminal act. And the secretary is going to vote. And she was placed on the ballot, according to the grand jury, for a criminal act. Well, the president's secretary should abstain from voting until this is resolved. It is just unethical. And when I bring up ethics, I bring up District 70. When the public brings an ethical problem to District 70, they did the proper thing. They formed an ethics committee and investigated. As we know, this board's policy is to have no ethics committee. There is none. And the students should know that. So the question really should be is, it is improper, I believe, to even have a vote and have the two members who are involved, who gained their position on the board through criminal acts. The secretary was able to gain access to the board in the election.
We heard you the first time. If you want to, if you have anything new to say, please do.
Excuse me. I am speaking. You don't interrupt.
No, I do. And you know the policies as well, if not better than I do. And you know that I can stop you when you are repeating something that you have already brought to the attention of this board. Please move on if you have anything additional.
Let the public note. If you criticize them for actions, they want to interrupt you. You have a right to do that.
I do.
But unless you've got a marshal to take me away from this phone.
No, I'll let you go.
I'm going to use my three minutes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, I lose my voice there, but a little bit irritating when you want to correct people. So I'm going back to the point of the lack of ethics and integrity of asking for the superintendent's contract to be voted tonight. Each board member should during the, when you make the motion, Pat, if you're going to make the motion, someone's going to say it. Then there should be discussion. Each board member should go around before they vote and give their views of why they're going to vote or why they're not going to vote. But the public should know, not just by a voice vote. Each member should state why they are voting or not voting on that contract. And I believe the proper thing to do is just don't make the motion.
I intend to make it.
You have the chutzpah, and so does your secretary. Do anything that matter what criminal indictments got you on the board in the first place? Thank you.
Pat, have you been indicted?
I have not. And how dare you question my integrity? But I don't know.
I will question your integrity because you got on the board by having the superintendent's assistant collect the sentences for you.
Go right ahead. You are free to do whatever you choose to do. Go right ahead.
All right. So let's be very clear. No, Pat has not been indicted. But the person that collected the sentences for you has been indicted.
You made it sound like he was. Let's be clear.
I want to be very clear about this. He is profiting from a criminal act. Let me be very clear about that. You're benefiting from a criminal act of being on the board. In the case of the secretary, she committed the perjury to get herself on the board. You're on the board, benefiting from a criminal act by the superintendent's assistant. That will be adjudicated. Yes, you're innocent and proven guilty, but a grand jury has reviewed the evidence. This board doesn't even have the ethics or the integrity to review the evidence to make a decision. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Lisa Rhodey. I live at 1212 Victory Drive. My question is, why, if it is a five-year contract and you do approve that, what happens? What are the events that would lead to a payout in full of the five years? If he retires, if he quits, if he whatever? I just don't want the taxpayers to be stuck with having to pay out the full five years if it's not carried out. I mean, I'm not even going to argue about the dollar amount. The dollar amount is obscene. The school is a great school, but compared to the private sector, I looked up statistics on the website, Department of Labor, and the average is for a CEO, the mean annual wage is $194,000 a year. I am not begrudging anyone their salary. But the for-profit industry needs to make their own money to stay in business. We, the taxpayers, fund these salaries. There's going to be a big change in the pension shift down to the local states with the school budget. Taxpayers already got hit on the income tax increase. I personally am losing $2,000 every year with the income tax hike. How much more can we afford? No question, Libertyville is an amazing school, but at what cost?
Anna Dre, 1020 Ashley Lane. I've got a couple of things I'd like to address you all about tonight. The first thing I want to address you about is, you know, I'm a Libertyville parent, so I'm familiar with that school the most. We have this great energy going on right now around our parent organization. And that's gotten a lot of us thinking about a lot of different things. I see student representatives here, which I think is super, super important. They're a valuable voice. What I don't see here is parent representation. I know several of you are parents, but you're not here as parents. You're here as superintendent and as board member. I urge you to reach out to the ParentCAT organizations, I know Lord Vernon Hills calls there, sorry, his kids, but both parent organizations, and give them a seat at this table. They should be here. They should be, they're valuable voices that you should hear. Am I correct in identifying that we've got three parents in the district on the board? Scott, Kevin, and Prentice? Is anybody else?
Ellen.
Oh, Ellen. Okay, great. The, and I think that's super important. And the other thing that used to happen, since I've had a child in the district since 2009, you guys used to come to our meetings at the local, at the ParentCATs organization. And those bridges need to happen. They're important. I question a five-year contract. I'm uncomfortable with it. I've done some calling around to see what the standards are. It's three and five years. I've also done some calling around to see what the salaries are. And Stevenson is the cheapest one. And I'd like to also note, they're reflected as the sixth-best high school in Illinois by U.S. News &amp; World Report at $204,000 on base salary. Deerfield, Highland Park is $205,000. Lake Forest, which is ranked 19th, is $238,000. And we are paying 290, going to pay $293,000 to be ranked 14th. And I think U.S. News &amp; World Report's a pretty reliable ranking system. We're 50% higher than the other school districts. I understand teacher contracts and people have been here a certain amount of time. The only ones higher than us that I could find is Nutria, and they're paying a god-awful $313,000. So I would ask you, board members, to think about that in the market. Are we paying the right amount for this position? And it's not a reflection of Prentice's skills. He may well be worth that. Can we afford that? That's a lot of money for the superintendent. The other thing I want to tell you, board, this whole thing with the indictments, I'm, it's icky. We'll all find out this fall what's what about that. I'm sorry it's happening in my community. I, if I were sitting on the board, would be very uncomfortable voting for an extension when the person you're voting on's secretary is currently under felony indictments. And I'm not saying she did anything. I don't know. I'm not in the middle of that. But I would caution you guys, and Mackenzie, I'm going to speak to you directly. I think you have an eye on a career in politics. This vote today will follow all of you. I want you to think about that and cast it. And then the last thing, I know there's some uncomfortable things that are said from this microphone. Some of them are probably accurate, some are probably not. I probably have been in that category. I'm going to caution you guys. I've been to a lot of civic meetings, both here and in Texas. I think getting in a, what's a word I can use on TV? Well, getting in a match with the people behind this microphone is, it's a bad idea. Galsen City Council has a straight-up crazy lady who goes every single time and talks about the Martians and blah, blah, blah. And the mayor of that city treats her with so much respect. She gets her three minutes, the buzzer goes off, and she's done. I would urge you to let people use their three minutes how they need to. Thank you for listening.
My name is Jerry Verbatim, 319 Carriage Hill Circle, Libertyville, Illinois. You know, I started this thing in 2014, and the real push and drive was to decrease our taxes. And, you know, I'm now paying with the 5.5% and on excess of $20,000 in personal property tax, and 75% of that goes to the schools. And I don't like it. It continues to go up and up and up. We've got to put a hold on this thing. I look at the contract currently, well, I didn't see all the contract, by the way. So if I'm saying some things wrong, please tell me. But the $219,000 annual salary is actually add 16,000 to that because, is it correct to say you pay him $16,000 to do what he wants to do, to invest? I think that's part of the contract. In addition to that, when he walks away, you pay him 30%. In addition to that, in a five-year contract, you pay him 1.5 the first year, 6, 6, and then 2.5 the last year? Is that correct?
What happened at CPI earlier or after that?
Well, that was in the paper. It was in the, was it incorrect? Then I apologize.
Yeah, it's in the dictionary.
Okay? But it's a very healthy contract. And, you know, I am, I've said consistently across the board, you've got a good product. And we appreciate that. But by God, I mean, we're shooting nails at each other, and we're forgetting the focus that we need to concentrate on. And that's to decrease the taxes. And that's to decrease the cost. Let's get back to something like that. You know, I think your contract is, if you deserve it, and I got to, I got to assume that people in this room know that the correct criteria in evaluating you, and if they think you deserve it, so be it. It'll probably happen tonight. But if not, it's a sin. It's a sin to the taxpayers. So let's get back to decreasing costs associated with running our business. And it is a business, whether you like it or not. And you need to take a business focus on this. Thank you.
My name is Frank Bararty. I live at 1414 Redusso Court. I want to talk to you about one simple word, and that's optics. You know, if you look at press, if you look at all the community discussions, the community discussions have started to move away from the great schools we have. And they've started to move into areas that I personally don't like. And the optics of this contract are horrible. People have outlined why. And we need to start shifting this conversation away from the controversial things that are going on. We don't need more ink out there about controversial issues, how we're spending money, and how we've got, we're off the stream. In other words, we're off the chart in a way of bad publicity. And this board has the responsibility and the power to change that. And I encourage you to think about that. Because the world has a way of monitoring things that get off the track. And we're beginning to get there. And I don't want people to look back two years from now and say, how did we let that happen? So you have a way to stop this right now, and I encourage you to do that.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Rita Fisher. I live at 407 Lake Street in Libertyville, and I am a taxpayer in this community, intentionally so. I'm also an employee of the district. But sometimes you can't remain silent in the face of things that need to be said, whether it's uncomfortable or imprudent to say them. So I've never spoken at a board meeting before. I've attended many of them. But I'm choosing to do so tonight. It was my decision to move to this community to provide the education to my daughter that the high schools in our district offer. And I've lived in other Lake County communities and paid more taxes proportionally to what I'm paying here in Libertyville. But I chose to pay those taxes because of the education offered here. I think it's important tonight to say that as someone who has worked in another district for 22 years and came to work in this district primarily because of its reputation, because of the strong leadership that is present here, the effective teams that have been hired over the years to provide an excellent education to our students, I chose to leave a district that I was very comfortable in to come and work with Prentice Lee, who, as superintendent, provides the necessary supports that we, as a district, need in order to function as well as we have over recent years. So I just felt it was important that all of the comments previously have been in regards to the process and not the person. But I think it's also important to say that the person in this district matters to the people who come to work in this district, the people who move here to educate their students in this district. And the stability of that leadership over the years is what has resulted in the excellence that we see in District 128. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Tom Kalinas, principal of Libertyville High School. And I sincerely respect and appreciate all the opinions shared tonight about the tax base and the process by which this is being discussed. I just want to share my own perspective, so the board has multiple perspectives to consider. As you know, I left a great school district, one of the top school districts in Illinois, and a great community to come to District 128 and Libertyville High School. And I don't enter, many of you don't know me, but I don't enter any of these types of decisions lightly, and I'm very analytical and do a lot of homework. And my research said that in District 128, there are great kids, great schools, an outstanding community, and an absolutely extraordinary superintendent. And having come here, I have not been disappointed in any of those four. And I do just have to say to the board that having been in education for nearly 25 years and having my entire family and friends be in public education, the person who sits in the superintendent's seat is extraordinarily critical to the health of the district. And if that is not the right person, things can go bad very, very quickly. So, thank you.
My name's John Gilliam, 328 East Donely Place, Vernon Hills, Illinois. I have one child in the district, two graduated, one on the way. In 2010, I made the conscious decision to move from Arlington Heights, a great suburb in its own right, with great schools in its own right, to move my children and my family to this community for one reason, and it is the schools. And I know many of you who sit behind me and in front of me made the same move. Jerry earlier asked one simple question, and that's the only thing that I want to address. And that question is, is that man worth the dollar on the contract? And I suppose in the end, I can't say what dollar amount he's worth, but I have worked with and for him for well over a decade. And I can tell you that his support and his leadership is priceless in this district. And you would have a hard time finding anyone in the district who would say something else. I respect everyone's opinion relative to process and so forth. But the question was asked. Jerry asked it, and so I want to answer that question.
Just as a point of clarification, you've heard what appear to be three voices in support, all apparently employees of the district. None of them talked about the process. I have to reiterate, all of the comments you've heard from me were about the process, not the person. So if you've got something to support the process, I'd like to hear it. And I'm really looking forward to the public discussion that's going to happen before the vote.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to the educational presentation tonight.
Our educational presentation this evening focuses on the very direct connection between powerful educator learning in District 128 and its impact on student learning in our district. As a district, we support, and our superintendent supports, the structures that are necessary to provide teachers the time, the space, and the resources to continuously improve their professional practice and to translate that learning into immediate action in the classroom for strategy, to develop strategies that engage students in the kind of learning that they need in a changing world. Whether it is through attendance at professional conferences, through the late start Wednesdays when teachers collaborate in their professional learning communities, the professional learning centers at each school, the LED at Libertyville and the hotspot at Vernon Hills, District 128 university classes that we develop and teach internally, summer curriculum projects that we support. Our teachers are continuously learning and collaborating to improve student learning. And that can only happen in a district where we have supportive structures to allow that to happen. So tonight, you're going to meet three educators and learn from two others who are not with us tonight about the impact of their learning on student learning. You're going to hear about students engaging in project-based learning, in inquiry learning, in strategies that allow them to collaborate, communicate, use their critical thinking skills and creativity, all the skills that are demanded in a changing world, in a world that we are preparing students to engage in work that we can't even imagine today, right? You guys are going to be creating your own work in the future because we don't know what you're going to be doing, and you're going to be successful because you'll be doing that. I actually know Lola, one of our new board reps' brothers, a recent graduate, who spent his summer designing an app with friends who he met together here in our community. So we need to engage students in the kind of learning necessary to prepare them for the work that they'll be doing that we can't even imagine. And the educators you'll meet tonight are going to share their projects and learning designs that have students doing just that. So we'll start with Emily Kerner. She's a Spanish teacher at Libertyville High School, and she's going to share a project that she designed as a result of her professional learning experience.
Thank you, Rita. Hello. This past summer, I had the opportunity to attend a conference on project-based learning. PBL is a vehicle for delivering content with authenticity and purpose. The hallmarks being a challenging problem or question, sustained inquiry, authenticity, student voice and choice, reflection, critique and revision, and a public product. With the help and direction of national leaders in education and the collaboration with, support of, and feedback from my colleagues at D-128 and beyond, I came up with a project idea that I would like to share with you today. The origin of my project comes from a concept in literature called windows and mirrors. It suggests that we consider in literature called windows and mirrors. It suggests that we consider the variety of narratives that each of our students brings into the classroom and provide them with texts that both reflect who they are, but also give them insight into other experiences as well. I learned about this concept in the diversity course offered by the district last year and have been inspired to affect the change that I want to see through my own classroom. One issue is the importance of providing children of color access to mirror texts because, quote, "When children cannot find themselves reflected in the books they read, or when the images they see are distorted, negative, or laughable, they learn a powerful lesson about how they are devalued in the society of which they are part." In my curriculum, students are frequently asked to write and speak in Spanish, but often without a real audience. My project aims to authenticate this experience for my students, but also serve as a tool for social justice. My students will be paired one-on-one with Spanish-speaking elementary school children. They will be tasked with interviewing them in the target language about their heritage, culture, family and community life, as well as their hopes and dreams for the future. Then, my students will create a personalized storybook in Spanish that celebrates the diversity of the child, is a true reflection of his or her identity and experience, and depicts the story of that child achieving his or her dreams in the future. Each of the components of the storybook is related to my existing curriculum, which includes the themes of communities, heroes, professions, and expressing hopes and desires about the future. The culmination of this project will be another face-to-face meeting with the children, where my students will read their published hardcover storybook to their child and give it to them as a gift to share with their families. For the children, these stories may serve as the first mirror text that empowers them to see their potential by honoring and valuing who they are and where they come from. For many of my students, these texts will serve as windows where they may meet people who are not like themselves and who offer alternative worldviews. Viewing literature through a lens of windows and mirrors helps us understand that in addition to texts being stories to be enjoyed, they also carry a very powerful message. And in the end, I hope that by involving an authentic audience and incorporating a relevant purpose, I will encourage my students to be fully engaged and take great pride in their learning outcomes. Finally, I want to thank each of you personally in the board for supporting this district and its teachers. The time that I spent at the conference among like-minded professionals from across the country and the district inspired me to create this project. Your recognition of the value of collaboration and innovation is paramount in transforming our educational system and successfully bridging the gap between the classroom and the world outside these doors for our students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Young, and I'm an English teacher at Vernon Hills High School. And I'm here to talk about a project that I was able to develop at a conference this summer for a new class at Vernon Hills called Social Justice Literature. This class is a senior elective, and the driving question for my project is how can we give visibility to groups who have been systemically invisible? And so the goal for the students is to think about what are the marginalized groups in our society and how have they been erased repeatedly? And what can we do to bring those groups into visibility? And one of the things that stood out to me from this conference that I was able to attend with Emily was the idea of having an authentic audience and how powerful that is for students. And so that's one thing that is going to be the driving force of this project. So the students will ultimately produce a product where they will have researched a group that has been erased, overlooked, and misrepresented in our society, and then make that invisible group visible to their audience, and they will actually choose both their audience and the product. So it's really centered in student choice and student voice. And as seniors who are going out into whatever their after-high-school hopes are, they'll be responsible for choosing some sort of product that's going to be meaningful in our society, which for a class like Social Justice Literature, I think is really important. If we're going to be talking about social justice, there has to be some sort of action involved. And so that's what this project will do for our students. In addition to the product that they choose, they will also have to craft a defense of the product that will include research of the marginalized group. It will include theory that backs up the research that they've done. For example, students could potentially research the literature found in American literature textbook to find the amount of literature written by LGBTQ authors. And if they find that there is no representation or very little representation from those authors, they could propose a textbook supplement to include the voice of those authors that they would pitch to a representative from McGraw-Hill to try and get their supplement included in this textbook. So that would be one example of something that students could do. But the opportunities for this project are really endless, and I'm really excited to see what the students put together, who they want to be their audience, and the group that they end up researching. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Jim Pardon. I'm a math teacher here at Vernon Hills. Thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak with you today. I'm going to share with you a project that I did with my summer school class. I taught Algebra I this summer here at the high school. And what I've been wrestling with in my brain for a couple of years now is how can I document the journey that my kids go on every year? And as a teacher, as teachers, we get to see the growth of the kids, and as parents, we see our kids grow. But sometimes the students themselves, who are in the here and now, don't recognize how much they have grown throughout the year. So what I was able to do this summer is do a lot of journaling with the kids and then also have them keep a portfolio of the math that they have produced in summer school. I used a website called Seesaw to do these portfolios. And an example of something that gets put into the portfolio would be a problem like this. I give the problem to the kids, let them wrestle with it a little bit, let them figure out how they want to solve it. We talk about common solutions and how we can relate the solutions that the kids came up with. And then they talk about what they reflect on how they initially thought about the problem, and then after hearing other people's solutions and having discussions, what they actually learned from the problem. So this would get put into their portfolio. And then over the course of, in this case, the course of three and a half weeks, they had a collection of work. Now, at the end of the semester, I posed this question to the kids, how can we convince someone that we know something? What would that look like? Is that the form of a paper and pencil test? Is it a final exam? Or is it something different? And what we ended up brainstorming together was that the kids were going to create what we have titled the Showcase of Knowledge. And they had the choice to figure out how are they going to communicate what they have learned in Algebra I for these three and a half weeks. With that student choice, came a lot of feedback from each other. So as they developed these ideas, they would run these ideas past each other, one another, and give feedback on that, what was good, what wasn't so good, what they could change. They got feedback from me, but I was not the main force behind this. It was the students themselves. We talked about this thing called the Authentic Audience, which we did learn about at this conference, and I posed that to the kids. Who are we going to be presenting this to? I already know what you know. I've seen what you can do mathematically. I don't need a final exam to tell me that. I don't need a test to tell me that. I know what you know. So to pitch your projects to me probably wouldn't be a very good idea. Who can we pitch them to? So we decided to create an invitation. We invited members of the community. We invited members of the school. We invited the parents of the kids to come in and experience this showcase with us. The kids had a lot of prep time to rehearse their projects, run them by each other. And then we actually did it. And this was, this is a couple of clips. We did it right here in our, one of our computer labs. We had kids presenting at each station. We did two or three rounds of presentations, and people got to cycle through different presentations. I think one of the coolest parts for me, as a parent of four kids, three of which are teenagers, who, two have now graduated and one in high school, I would love to be able to walk into that school and see what my kids are doing academically. I can see them on the athletic field. I can see them in musical. But what are they doing in the classrooms? And the parents had a chance to come in and see their kids in action as their kids were presenting what they learned in Algebra I. Some kids did it with a Google slideshow. You can see a gentleman in the background doing it up on the board. He decided it would be easier for him to write and show stuff. And then finally, some kids used a combination of both showing some work on a whiteboard and then also presenting. It was a really neat experience for me. In closing, I want to thank all of you in this room for not only supporting innovation, but really embracing innovation and allowing me as a teacher to come into the classroom and be creative. It really is a nice thing. So thank you.
Jim won't tell you this, so I will. I was very grateful to be invited to his Showcase of Knowledge and enjoyed it thoroughly. And on the way out, Mary Todrick was with me as well, and she took some pictures and posted them on social media that you might have seen this summer. But as we were walking out, a parent asked us to step aside and listen to her story of how Jim had changed her daughter's life as a result of this class and this project. She is someone who formerly did not care for math, did not believe that she could succeed in math, and she found herself racing home from Jim's class to perfect her project, to make sure that she understood everything that was happening in class and was ready for the next day with Jim and with the students in her Algebra summer school class. So I will also share that I'm going to talk about this project here because these teachers can't be here. You're going to see some student videos at the end, and you may also see me in the background of one of these videos. Now, this was on a different occasion. I was invited to come see the project that Shannon and Margaret designed. And as I was, as students were filming their videos in the hallway, you see me in the background, and you see me walking away. And that was to talk to Mary Childers, who was working as a monitor in the hallway at Vernon Hills High School. And she pulled me over, because I mentioned this story about Jim on opening day as well. She pulled me over to say, you know, I really just have to thank you for sharing that story about Jim and his algebra class on opening day, because I have a 30-year-old daughter, and the same is true of Jim for my daughter. And I just really wanted you to know that, that he changed her life too. So, you know, this is the power of the educators in this district. When we develop teacher expertise, when we rely on their expertise to influence their colleagues, like you're going to see in this project that I'll share now, powerful things happen in D128. Jim is one of the many excellent educators we have that change lives every day. I can't wait to see Emily's project and Tara's project implemented so we can see the same results from their students. This project, designed by Shannon Ettnier and Margaret Mickelson over the summer, Shannon is from Vernon Hills, a science teacher, and Maggie is a Libertyville science teacher. They met through the Innovation Team. They met at a conference, and they collaborated this summer to design a project to introduce chemistry to their students. They called it the Chemistry, the Element Alter Ego Project. And in the very first days of school, students were learning not just chemistry, but they were also learning about themselves and the other students in the room, and developing very personal relationships that they will carry through the rest of their year together as a chemistry family in each of their classes. So these two educators went to one conference. They designed one project together, and they came home and shared it with their colleagues. And they shared it in the very first days of school. One colleague who implemented this heard about it at the opening day ceremony. So had very little time to kind of come together and decide to plan it. But when they heard about it, they thought it was so powerful that they decided they would do it in their classrooms too. So as a result of this collaboration of two teachers, 400 students at Vernon Hills High School and at Libertyville High School experienced this really cool project. So some of the common threads that you heard through the earlier projects is that students are collaborating, they're presenting their work authentically, they're learning their content through the development of critical thinking skills, creativity skills, skills in collaboration and communication. And that's exactly what happened in these classrooms. Students learned how to write science reports through this Element Alter Ego Project. Actually, some of them called it their element spirit animal as well, right? So they were finding themselves in a chemical element and making connections. They had to write a claim to establish the connections between their personality and the chemical element they chose. Some of them thought that they might choose one element, and as they learned about the characteristics of it, they thought it sounded cool, like gold, or, you know, who wouldn't want to be gold, right? But then they discovered that, well, that's not really who I am, so I have to choose another element. So they learned to write their skills reports using their claim about the element and the connection, evidence to support that claim based on the characteristics of the element, and their reasoning, their rationale for making that connection between the element and themselves. And what they did with those connections was to create a mask that showed the characteristics of the element, as well as their personal interests, skills, connections with their family. And they displayed those masks to their classmates through the form of gallery walks where they viewed each other's masks and gave feedback to each other, through the form of producing a one-minute video that they will share with parents at open house. And you're seeing some of the examples and some of the student reactions. I also have, and I guess I would like maybe some help from the educators in the room, to show you the actual examples of the map that students created. As I visited these classrooms, and as you'll hear in the video, students understand what elements are, the characteristics of elements, the family, families of, grouping of elements, and they understand and were using these chemical terms before they ever opened a syllabus or a chemistry textbook. And when they described the importance of connecting with each other in the classroom and connecting with the chemical element, they described kind of lasting relationships that would form with their classmates and with the element that they chose. I just want to share with you a couple of the student clips about their element.
Business is a very stable element, though it is slightly radioactive. Like me, I'm stable in most situations, though I occasionally have my rafted moments. I enjoy being with water, especially in the ocean. And business is an element that is stable to water at regular temperatures. The crystal structure of business is organized in a stair structure, which matches my organized personality. I always color code and label my things, including school supplies. I also like to take things step by step. Business is diamagnetic, which means it tends to become magnetized in a direction at 150 degrees. My family is very close, and like a magnet, love holds us together as one. My nationality is Chinese, and China's a major supplier of business. Many people describe me as a fun, deposit. My nationality is Chinese. And China is a major supplier of business. Many people describe me as a fun and happy person to be around, and that's why I do some fun colors in this book. Like me, business stands out with its bright colors and metallic shine. Business is brittle. It can easily break, which is comparable to the texture of my hair. If I don't put conditioner in my hair, it becomes frail and starts to get some breakdowns. Because of its physical and chemical properties, business is my almost always stable element animal spirit.
We'll look at one more example. I have a few more, but I know we've taken a bit of your time tonight.
Hi, I'm Caroline, and I am a spirit animal, and it's potassium, because we share many of the same characteristics. Everyone, I'm from a family of six, me, my mom, my dad, my sister, and my two cats. Potassium is also from a family of six alkaline metals. Potassium is a very active element, and it reacts strongly with other elements, especially water. I'm also a very active person and am involved in two sports as well as various clubs and activities. I love to help my friends with their schoolwork, and potassium helps other elements by giving them an extra electron. Potassium is a silver wet color, and I wear silver earrings. Potassium is a sober wet color, and I wear sober earrings. Potassium is also involved in making of soft soap, and I hate the feeling of bar soap on my hands, and I'm also found to drip, so I wash my hands a lot and so forth. So potassium and iron are very similar, so potassium is my element spirit animal.
So to conclude, we've heard that when teachers collaborate and when they are given the structure and the time and support to develop their professional learning, really positive things happens for students in our classroom from day one. So we look forward to continually supporting our teachers, their professional growth, and the impact that that has on the students in D-128 on a scale that we're seeing in ways that we never thought possible through these collaborations. It's not easy for teachers to find time to connect together and to share what they've learned and developed, and by doing things that make it possible for them to find this time, we're seeing amazing results in what happens for kids in our district. Any questions for our teachers?
All right, great job, you guys. Sometimes it's important to remember why we still do this. Okay, moving on to the president's report, I do want to make comments on a few things that were said. First of all, Frank, I couldn't agree with you more. The level to which some of these conversations have gone, and I will say, especially with regard to the attacks on personal integrity of both board members and employees of this district, to me is extremely disappointing and unfortunate. The second thing that I'll say, this question asked about payout and the length of this contract, if Prentice retires, there's no payout. If Prentice quits, there's no payout. If Prentice were to be discharged for costs, okay, as with most cases when that happens, there would be negotiations that would take place. I really couldn't begin to predict where that is, but just because we're about to approve a five-year contract doesn't mean that if Prentice retires next year, we're going to have to buy out four years. So let's be clear on that. With respect to the process, we've had at least two closed session meetings on this topic, so rest assured, this is not something that we have rammed through. This is not something that we haven't discussed in great detail at the board level. As a general rule, we do not negotiate contracts in public, and that is a carve-out, so to speak, in the Open Meetings Act per the state statutes. So I just want to reassure everybody, we have talked about it extensively. It's actually a four-year extension to his existing contract, okay? Prentice is currently under contract. It's a contract that currently expires at the end of this school year, okay? And I do want to just make sure a couple of facts are really clear. If Prentice kept his current contract, which expires at the end of this school year, he would make more money than the new contract that we are going to put up for approval, okay? So the first thing we did was when we renegotiated, or when we negotiated this extension, this four-year extension, we negotiated that the first year of salary would be lower than the contract that he already had. I think that's what business people like to do, when they take a business mindset. Scott?
Yes.
Okay. So to those who don't think that we have such a mindset, trust me, there are a number of us here that deal with large budgets and, shall I say, rather thorough budget negotiations, and so we're quite familiar with the process. The second thing, well, the second thing I'll address is why five years? Again, it's a four-year extension to his current contract. We want to get that done, and I'll just speak on my own behalf. You guys can do your thing when we put the motion out, because this is the person that we want to be superintendent for as long as he wants to be superintendent, okay? That's how I see it. Again, I'll open it up to others who want to comment on it, but to me, it's that simple, okay? As long as Prentice wants to stay here, we want him to stay here. I think our record speaks for itself. I've heard nothing to the contrary, and I think there are a lot of questions that were raised with respect to the value, and I know when I say this, I'm going to get in trouble, but that's fine. You know, trust me, I treat every dollar we spend of the taxpayer's dollar as if it was my own, okay? I do, okay? Now, let me put it in perspective. I actually went out to dinner with my wife on Saturday, and we went to a nice little restaurant. I think we spent $9.5 for dinner, and I think I left a $22 tip, okay? Decent service, you know, a little more than 20%, I thought that was a fair tip. So let me just put this in perspective a little bit. Someone mentioned the retirement incentive, and there is one in the contract, and it is about a third of his current salary, okay? And you guys can all check my math if you calculators out, all right? My math, you and I pay about the same amount of taxes, okay? Which I don't know whether that's on the higher end or the middle end, but it's certainly not on the lower end, okay? That retirement incentive after what will be 15 to 17 years of service, which I honestly believe will be distinguished service, very valuable service, is going to require me to give about an $8 to $10 tip. Okay? So that's my perspective on it, all right? Again, I treat every dollar in the district as if it's my own. I wouldn't spend any money in this district foolishly, but if you were to ask me if Prentice was worth a $10 tip after 17 years of service, I got news for you, I'm not going to hesitate. He is, okay?
Is that the amount? Is that the same amount that's in the current contract?
Oh, that's in the current contract, yeah.
So he would get it if he retired June 30th?
Or again, let's take the salary. If you take $50,000 off the salary and say, I'm much happier with that number. By the way, if you check the numbers and reboot that, no, we're not going to open up the Republican Congress.
You're just making a mockery of the whole thing.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I'm trying to help, I'm trying to help everybody. That's why I said I would get in trouble, but it's important, I think, to put it in perspective and try to, you know, make sure that we understand what the facts are, okay? Not making a mockery of it at all. That's why you have to take me on face value. Spending $100,000 in district money is not something that I take lightly. Dan? Okay, can you vouch for that?
I would agree.
Okay, so, you know, I mean, I think that's really just a perspective I would share, okay? You know, and I also highlight, you know, we had a budget hearing the other day. What was it, the 8th of August? Well, a week ago today, last Monday, right? I think? Nobody showed up. Okay, so there was a good chance. We were prepared to discuss the budget in great detail. We were prepared to answer any questions on the budget in great detail. We spent countless hours going through the budget, and on that night, we had nobody show up, okay? So, you know, I don't know what that means. I stand up here month after month, and I argue that our taxes are too high, and that we need to continue to do any and everything we can to keep them as low as possible, okay? I think our record again speaks for ourselves. In the last four years, we've abated almost $20 million, okay? And again, it's appalling to me that we still have not been able to succeed in getting people to appreciate how seriously we take that aspect of our business. But as was said about it, I respect your opinion. It is what it is. I just, I don't know what else to do, okay? Having said that, we will keep trying. We will continue to work with Dan to do everything we can to make sure we are good stewards of the taxpayers' money, okay? And we'll go on and continue to do the things that we do. Okay? So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve Prentice's contract.
I move to approve the contract.
Is there a second? Okay, all right, Amy Dischuck.
I'd like to say a few things. As I've been thinking about this and just thinking about the working with Prentice and under his leadership over these years, I have now started my ninth year on the board. And when I came, Prentice was relatively new as superintendent. He was being charged by the board, many of whom were leaving, to move forward, you know, to get his PhD. They were encouraging him to continue to strive. They recognized excellence in him, and they were really asking him to move forward and need certain criteria, but they had the confidence in him, and they put the trust in him because they saw something special. And that has only just fully exceeded anything that I think anybody could have hoped for. And the thing that I think is really neat is I see Prentice doing that with his staff and his faculty. I see him looking for talent and trying to cultivate that talent and move it forward. There are many reasons why I think it's really important for us to do this four-year extension now. I think we're at a time when we really need his really extraordinary leadership in our district, and we have just hired some amazing new talent for our district, and they will benefit greatly from the strength of Prentice's moving forward. And if we can have him, if we can extend his contract for four more years, it's only going to benefit traveling all the way down, so I think it's essential that we do it now. I'm actually very anxious to do this extension now so that he doesn't get hired away. He is, you know, talking about the public sector, when there's somebody that's an extraordinary talent, you know that there are offers coming in from other places. We're beginning a giant building project, but really it's essential that we have his strength of leadership to move forward with that, and there'll be other things that follow that, so that's another reason why I think it's essential that we have this contract extension happening now. The teacher contract is about to begin to be negotiated, and as Pat has mentioned, the other meetings, I also believe it's essential for there to be the vote of confidence and assurance in the faculty that they know that this strong leader is going to be here throughout this time that they're extending. As many of you know or maybe you don't know, our state is in financial turmoil as to do with state funding. Prentice is amazing at understanding, bringing us information, advocating on behalf of our district as well as the district's, the students across the state, and just again, just incredible knowledge. And I think the thing that really strikes me though, in addition to all these other things, is the way that Prentice has a style of leadership that builds others up, and I think that travels, it permeates throughout, certainly the board, but even more importantly, through the entire district, from the next top administrator down to every employee, to every student. He has such a heart for every student and to bring them, as he talks about, we want to bring every student from the very bottom up. We don't want to just raise the top kids. We want to bring everybody up. And he's done that, he's proven that, so great effect of leadership, and I'm just, I'm so proud to be able to offer this to him, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a comment, and maybe it's more than just a comment. And I think I'd like to kind of share a perspective, and it's a personal perspective. I've just finished my second year on the board, and it's, overall, it's been a terrific experience on several fronts. It's been extremely interesting, in some cases, it's been eye-opening. But I can also tell you, as being a member of this board for two years, I've had my personal reputation and my integrity threatened, and I've had it threatened based on how I think and how I might vote. That not only affects me, that affects my wife, my kids, my friends. And I'm sorry, but I deserve the right to defend that. You know, I've worked very hard to listen and contemplate all points of view on issues, and especially those that I have a really hard time understanding or that I might disagree with. Now, this Saturday was a perfect example of how you hear things on two ends of the spectrum. And I just give this as an example. I wake up Saturday morning and I got a district email. I open up that email and I see a subject line. Subject line of that email reads as follows, and I quote, "Another LHS failure," end of quote, which insinuates there's a lot of bad stuff going on at Libertyville High School. Now, that was from a parent who stressed concern and frustration over Libertyville High School's website. And that website, for those who've gotten the emails and read, we're having to adapt our website to the American Disabilities Act. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong on this, we're one of the first districts to do so. Every school district in the state will have to follow. And not only do you have to get that district, or to get your website ADA compliant, but any link to an activity group, an athletic association, a parents' group, also has to be ADA compliant. And I think Dr. Kalentis would say, has it been perfect and easy and going? Heck no. There's a lot of frustration. There's lessons learned. How do we get better at that? How do we learn from this? Can we pass this on to other districts and schools so they can learn from what we went through? You know, that's the, that's one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum is still this Saturday. I go out to dinner with my wife and I and our good friends. They live in Libertyville, Illinois. They have four kids. Three of their kids, the oldest ones, went to Carmel High School. They made a huge family decision. Trust me, this, they're a great athletic family. This was a big deal for them. They made the decision to send their fourth and final child to Libertyville High School. Of course, in the conversation, I asked, how's that going? They are thrilled. They cannot believe the reception that they have received, their child has received from teachers, administrators, coaches, he plays football. And they end the conversation, they're like, and by the way, these two individuals also went to Carmel High School. They're like, I can't believe it, we're drinking the Kool-Aid and we're bleeding orange and And I'll leave it at that. You know, so you have these things going on, and so what's the proper perspective to have as a board member, as a community member? How do you look at the world? Is it that there's failures all over the place, or are some things good? And I try to put this in the proper perspective. So I've worked for Baxter for over eight years, and I was with Abbott for a long time. We often have people in our company that move to Northern Illinois, either outside the country or other parts of the US. Over the last five years, the vast proportion and majority of those people are moving to the following communities: Vernon Hills, Green Oaks, Meadowa, and Libertyville. You ask them, why? Why a bigger proportion? Why are you going to these communities first? Simple answer, it's the schools, okay? I also have a lot of families in my neighborhood, and a lot of them aren't coming from out of state. They're coming from surrounding communities. And a lot of these people are even downsizing their houses from where they work. Why? Because houses are more expensive? And yeah, Jerry, perhaps their taxes are more expensive. Why would you do this? Why are you making this decision? Simple answer, it's the schools. And by the way, conversely, and I'm sure there's somebody out there, but I'm not aware of anyone who's like living here and electing to move outside into neighboring communities and leaving these schools. Now, here's another aspect of it. I grew up in Libertyville, Illinois. My parents grew up in Libertyville, Illinois. My grandparents grew up in Libertyville, Illinois. And what these outsiders say when they come to our subdivisions and they look at these things, they're like, you know what, we're amazed by the number of people who grew up here, moved away, got married, had kids, now they're moving back to the communities in which they grew up. I'm one of those individuals. The guy here sitting to the right of me is one of those individuals. Jerry, your son Tim also decided to move back. Why? Because we want to have the same experience for our kids that we had in these schools. Is this a bad thing? You know, this is what's going on. And I can tell you this, what's changed since I went to school and the schools now? The schools are a heck of a lot better today than they were when we went to school, okay? This is reflected, and we go through this a lot, of the many metrics that we, you know, basically compare ourselves to other districts around this area. They include increases in ACT scores. They include increases in the number of students taking AP classes and passing those and getting higher scores. They include emphasis and increased emphasis on providing terrific services for students with learning disabilities. And what does this all lead to? Well, last week, you published that in Niche in the rankings, and I know there's different rankings, but our school district is second in the state and one of the top in the nations. This has happened over the last 13 years, okay? Now, the question is, how does this happen? Our schools thrive in fine arts. They thrive and compete for state championships in athletics, and most importantly, they thrive academically. And some might like to think this just happens by chance or luck. Now, I'm telling you, that's not the case. It starts with terrific parents and families, all of which you are all representing here in this room here today. It also begins with teachers, and it begins with building and And it begins with building administrators who keep the wheels of the train on the tracks. And it starts with a vision, a strategy, and culture. We're hiring the right leaders to make sure this happens. And as I look at Dan, I look at Mark, I look at Brian, Dr. Fisher, Dr. Kalentis, and Dr. Gilliam, these have been pretty darn good hires, and they've come from this man. Okay? Now, having said all that, oh, I believe there's room for improvement. Things aren't perfect, they never are. I work for a corporation. We're doing pretty well right now. There's a lot of room for improvement. But I really believe that this district has a culture of continuous improvement. And we fight, and trust me, we as board members, I speak for myself, but we challenge the administration. We don't green stamp it. We challenge it, we discuss it. And for those who were at the budget meetings over the past month and a half would have seen that. Because we push like hell to balance this budget, take costs down, and do the right thing for the taxpayer. Those were tough decisions, and this group has never shied away from that. So when I think about the schools, I'm sorry. I can't think of them in terms of, quote, "Another school failure." But I think about the tens of thousands of student success stories that have happened over the 13 years that Dr. Lee has been the leader in this district. And about what needs to be done to build on that success. I also choose to think about the real issues that we face as a district and a community. These are real issues now. We have a new teacher contract coming up at the end of the year. This is important that we get this right. And he's a big piece of that, and that was already commented on. We have a new pool that's beginning at LHS. We got to make sure that goes to schedule. Furthermore, we have more planned housing developments that are happening in Vernon Hills. And by the way, the implications on this building could be huge. We have to face that challenge. Furthermore, speaks to the schools. We have outside subdivisions, outside of our community, that are working like hell to annex themselves within this district. Why? It goes back to my simple answer. It's the schools. They want in. And last but not least, and Rita talked about it, and it's hot off the present, it's happening as we speak, we continue to have state budget and financing challenges. We got real big issues we got to take on. That needs to be our focus. These are real and now, and I believe Dr. Lee's contract extension is a key step to ensure this district continues to thrive well into the future, given this current environment. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah. I don't really think I have to add more on top of these two because they've already alluded to Prentice as the quality man he is and what he's done for our community. I feel compelled to add that Prentice was my superintendent, and he created an environment from the top down that allows every student to succeed. Was I an A student? No, far from it. Yet, he created a environment and setting where all young people strive as hard as they can to better themselves. And I strongly believe that that system is why I sit on this board here. And I also want to address the process that people seem to be bringing up a lot. And it's frankly, it's quite upsetting to me as a person to hear people say things like, "We rubber stamp some of these issues." Because as a new member on the board, I heard that coming in. And frankly, in these past few months, it couldn't be anything more opposite than that. The due diligence, the conversations we've had together as a board about some of these very important financial decisions have frankly been extremely thorough. And I will not be associated with rhetoric that we are not transparent or that we are rubber stamping things because that is far from the truth.
Okay, anybody else?
So coming into today's, this evening's meeting, and Prentice knows this because he and I had a conversation. I told him I was going to go no on his contract extension. And I made it very clear, I want to make it clear to everybody, this is not about the individual. Because if you talk to people in Springfield, he's one of the most highly respected superintendents in Illinois. He's the man that needs to get on the ship during the Springfield craziness. And that's what it is. But it is about the contract. And I have certain bias that we all have when we join an organization or join a board. And one of those biases is I've never renegotiated a contract while it's still in existence. And I have to learn to get over that, and that's my weakness. And I will. Another bias that I share with Prentice is that five years seems to belong to me. Never heard of five-year contracts. But again, I think Anna pointed out that those sometimes are the norm, especially in this environment. And again, I'm not from this environment. Rarely admit that to Prentice. So I don't know how I'm going to vote. But again, let's be very clear. The individual, the individual's manifested in everybody he's hired. I know people from Highland Park that when Tom was hired, my email went crazy, crazy, that this guy is a superstar. Prentice can tell you, I think he got an email from me saying, "Amazing job." Dan, don't know as many people from Dan's old stomping grounds. I do know dealing with Dan over the last three months. Been there three months yet? Seems like forever. Especially the way, especially the questions I asked him. Superstar. What else do we want in a leader, other than the ability to hire superstars? I think all of us, Pat, Scott, everybody who's led, Ellen's led schools, the number one thing we have to do is hire great people. And if we do that, everything else is successful. So again, this is a guy that deserves the respect. And there's a lot of, you know, discussions about the compensation and things like that. And heck, I think I stood up there in January of last year, and I was one of the leaders of saying, "We need to make sure we control costs." And I can tell you, I, I'm on this board, and I'll make sure we control costs. I'm not so sure this is one of the areas where we want to, Pennywise, Palpulsh. Now again, with that being said, I've told Prentice, "I may vote, I may not vote. That's a beauty about democracy and change our minds." But I want to thank him for the job he's done, the service that he's exhibited. And that's all I would say, thank you.
All right, anybody else? No? Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and then we have extensive discussion. Can I ask for a roll call, please?
Vernon?
Yes.
Luks?
Yes.
Huber?
I'm going to abstain.
Lundstedt?
Yes.
Batson?
Yes.
Grudy?
Yes.
Mauer?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, can I say, can I say one thing? First of all, thank you for your confidence and the very nice comments. And I also want to take a moment and acknowledge all the folks that came here tonight to express their opinions on the contract or other issues. I think the beautiful thing about our democracy is we have an opportunity to do that. And more of us need to take advantage to do that, really at a grassroots level, like a school board or a library district, fire protection district, you know, et cetera, our local village governments. But I do respect that you've taken your time to come out, and many of you have made comments, and several of you did not, tonight, which is fine. You're here, and thank you for that. And just know I respect that. And there may be times that we disagree on something. But we're going to continue to work to ensure that every student that walks in the door of these two schools grows and achieves at higher levels and is safe and healthy in doing that. And that has been my focus for 38 years as an educator, 12 years as a principal, and now my 13th year here. I think this is my, my math is correct, their 25th or 26th year, moving forward in upper-level administration. And that has always been my focus. And the folks that we are fortunate enough to work with here, our administrators at the building, our, you know, phenomenal teachers, our support staff. And we always talk about in this district, whatever role people play in this district, they have a role in the ultimate success of all of these young people that are sitting here tonight and all of their colleagues. It takes every single one of us with a great set of parents, with a very supportive community, to make it all work. And it also takes an excellent school board that's willing to work as a partner, that can share in that vision, and that can also be that due diligence deep. I told one of the board members, you know, today or a few days ago, my appreciation of working with this board, and this is the sixth or seventh configuration of school boards that I've worked with, lots of different faces, going back to Ann Landcraft, Jan Foreman, Judy Sugarman, Alex DeLaPolly, you know, we could just name all of the great board members that we've had here. But the thing I've always appreciated most is the depth of discussion that we have on complex issues. And with Mac and Kevin joining the board, they've added context and perspective to those conversations. They have made us better in terms of doing that. But I will assure you that in order for us to be successful, all of those pieces need to be lined up in that conversation, including the school board is a critical piece of that. So having, you know, an excellent school board is part and parcel in us being able to maximize the potential of this district. So again, I respect all the comments that were made tonight. I appreciate all the nice comments that were made, you know, by board members and, you know, several of the administrators here in the district. And I look forward to working with you in the future. And I'll leave you with this comment. In our business in education, the nature of the beast is, I'm a higher earner because I'm 38 years in the business and I have a doctorate degree. Okay? The highest-earning people in our district on the teacher scale are people that have the highest degree level, the most education, and they've been here the most years. We have three administrators retired who have been replaced, as Kevin mentioned earlier, have been replaced by, you know, three rock stars. Okay? And you can count John in because this is only John's fourth year, replacing Ellen Swick. Each one of those administrators were veteran administrators, and their salaries were higher. And so as you're going to see, if you stay for the budget overview today, you're going to see that we've recouped several hundred thousand dollars in salaries because people that have been in the business for 37, 38 years, okay, finished their careers here, which was wonderful for us, and retired, were replaced by the next generation. We've went through that same process with teachers in this district. We have hired about 70% of the teachers in this district in the last 10 years. And that means that group of teachers before were all veteran teachers. So we have the, you know, opportunity to look at the big picture. And several years from now, I'm going to retire, and you're going to hire a new superintendent. And you're going to hire a superintendent that's probably someplace on that perspective. So that's just, in our business, that is a function of education and time served that really drives your salary toward the end of your career. So again, I appreciate the support, your confidence, in continuing to move forward with this. Because as Scott has said, we have some real challenges in front of us to navigate together. And we will continue to, as Rita has talked about, we will continue to innovate in this district to make sure that we are on the leading edge of educating and preparing kids in the future. And I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to continue to work, you know, with the administrators and the parent groups. And I'm looking at Steve Mitchell out there. Steve and I did some heavy-duty lifting about, I don't know, nine or 10 years ago, just rebuilding Katz Aquatics after a really bad kind of breakup. And looking at what that organization has become through the work we all did together. And that was a great experience and great for the district. So I look forward to continuing doing that kind of work and ultimately for our kids to be more successful. Because that's what we're all about at the end of the day, and we're all about that. So we'll continue to work on that. So thank you very much, Pat.
Okay, and I do want to back up just one more thing. I want to just comment. Last month, we had some input from a resident regarding our pool contract. And there were a number of issues that were mentioned there. And I just want to make sure everybody's clear. Following that, we had that contract reexamined extensively by our attorneys. And came to agreement that with very minor changes, that contract was something we were comfortable with. And we did actually take action, I believe it was on August 8th. Was it the same day as the budget meeting? All right, earlier, earlier this month, we took action to approve that. However, that was following a very extensive re-review by our attorneys, who, for the record, were very experienced in construction law and practices.
Okay. All right, Stephen, now, not on the agenda, but the addition that I mentioned when we started is our English school board reps. I met, I met a couple of you when we interviewed you. Okay, so welcome. This is your maiden appearance, all right? I will tell you, a lot of, most of the time, we don't go this long. So I'll also tell you that if you have pressing need after your session tonight, you are free to go, all right? You can also stay for more fun if you would like. Okay? So I'd ask, let's go down, as you do your report, just say who you are, what school you, what's who you're from. All right? And maybe throw in one little personal tidbit about something that you're really interested in. Okay? Who's going to go first? Down in far ahead?
Sure. Okay, so my name is Lola Knaade.
Try to speak into the microphone. We want people on TV to get to know you better.
Okay. So my name is Lola Knaade. I go to Libertyville High School, and I'm a senior this year. One thing that I did was I went on the French exchange this past summer, which was a really cool experience. I love French.
Great.
All right, so.
And then my name is Zachary Ford. I'm also a senior at Libertyville High School. And then just also at Libertyville, I'm involved in a club called Death Buddies, which is just really a cool opportunity for our students to connect with students at Libertyville with intellectual and physical disabilities.
My name is Madison Kerber. If you remember Ellie Daly, unfortunately, she had to move away, so I am replacing her if you don't recognize my face. And then I'm a senior at LHS. And one cool thing I did this summer was I went to Lake Placid and stayed at the Olympic Training Center. And I got to see Don Underwood present, which was really cool.
Did you see the hockey rink where the Miracle on Ice was?
Yeah, it was so.
Were you able to go on it?
No, we didn't go on it. They were having like lessons, like ice skating lessons, but it was crazy. It was like surreal being there.
That's, that's a place I want to go to.
Yeah, I would have gone there, it was really cool.
All right. So we're going to start off by giving a quick overview of what LHS students have been doing this past summer. So as I said, a group of students from French IV and French III spent three weeks in France, and I personally went on the French exchange at the time of my life. We spent two weeks in a city in Western France called Angers with a host family, and one week in Paris. So culturally, it was a great experience, and I think my French improved greatly. It was such an enlightening experience, and I'm so glad I had the opportunity to go on this trip this past summer.
In addition to the summer, a group of 40 LHS students went on a service trip to Cambodia with the LHS sponsored club, Caring for Cambodia. While there, LHS students returned for the second year to help improve the education system through Cambodia. They helped by building schools, organizing classrooms, and developing relationships with students there. Latin Club also spent two weeks in Greece and Italy over the summer. The group of 15 students toured the countries, visiting cities, including Santorino, the Vatican City in Athens. And lastly, Photo Club went to Peru over the summer. While visiting sites like Machu Picchu, the group captured many photos that truly depicted the diverse, the diverse culture of people living in Peru.
Another trip this summer that I already mentioned was Lake Placid. And the purpose of the trip was, it was A students that were part of Life of a Wildcat, which is like a newer prevention and wellness program we have started at LHS. So we got to go, I saw Don Underwood present, who, he talked about like sleep, nutrition, drugs, and alcohol, and their effects on athletic performance. And then we also saw different schools present how their kind of like Life of a Wildcat programs at their school, the successes they had and the challenges they had and how to overcome them and ideas to implement in our school, which we'll mention some later that we're working on now. And overall, I'd say the trip was a really good, like, it was a really good trip, a great experience, and it was a success.
Linku leaders also had their freshman orientation on August 9th. It was a great experience. And as a Linku leader, I think the freshmen are acclimating very well to the new high school environment. Also, on August 13th, students from various activities at LHS went to the North Suburban Conference that stressed the importance of acceptance.
Conference that stressed the importance of acceptance. I went to the conference and found it to be very impactful in Iowa Lake.
Seventy-four students auditioned this past Tuesday for the Fall Musical at Libertyville, and after Thursday's callbacks, a large group of students were casted. The performance for this year's The King and I will be November 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. In addition, marching band camp occurred from August 1st to the 4th. The camp was extremely successful as well with their ability to fundraise $3,500 towards a children's charity called Working Together.
For our club's news at LHS, as I mentioned, Life of a Wildcat, they're having a kickoff for Yellow Ribbon Week on Friday, and Yellow Ribbon Week is to promote like mental health awareness and suicide prevention. So basically, at that event, we're gonna decorate the school so people like know what this week is about and just like get together as a good, positive Friday night. And then also other clubs include like Best Buddies, Interact, FCA, Advocats, all, a lot of clubs are starting up this week. And then also even a new club at LHS called TED Talks, which you guys probably know what that is, but basically to help students kind of craft that too, which is really cool.
So there's a new salad bar at LHS and VHS, and it is a huge success. Students and faculty have given lots of positive feedback about the new addition. There's also a new program being implemented at LHS that allows students to order a healthier lunch for after school in a brown paper bag. And this program was organized through a club called Life of a Wildcat at LHS.
How's the uptake on that? Are people like actually doing it?
The brown paper bag?
Yeah.
I haven't got any data yet on it, but I can find out. A principal might be doing it. I know, I know that. Because it's really geared for kids who have to stay late for school and rather than just eat out of the vending machines, want to get a healthier meal before an athletic contest or a late night.
I know my son has the early lunch and they call it the brunch.
Yes.
But he plays football after school. But the problem is, he's not that hungry at 10:30. And I found out, oh, I'm eating a snack, and he asked what the snack was, and of course it's pretzels.
Yeah.
And it's like, okay, this isn't gonna cut it.
I can get him some zone bars.
Huh?
I can get him some zone bars.
Well, you do that, that from Adam and things. You can have three. But I mean, that's, that's a nice, that's a nice alternative.
Yeah. And that was our, our food service provider, Chartwell, and Dan, our cafeteria manager, just did a fantastic job putting that all together for us.
How about the salad bar, what's the concept of it?
There's always a line, right?
Delicious.
You may remember that that salad bar proposal came from a group of students who presented here last year in their project that was designed at Vernon Hills and.
Do they have the salad bar? John, you have it.
Yeah.
Have you had it there, though?
No, it was, we just put it in.
You did?
And it was from.
It was from their suggestion.
All right. In sports news at LHS, football had their first game, and they beat Highland Park. So I was.
I'm a Wildcat. I had my black.
How'd that go, Tom? Did you play over at Highland Park? How was that?
It was, it was an emotional game, but the, the, the kids at Libertyville adopted me and said, I'm a Wildcat. Now we got our first win, and the kids at HP were pretty gentle with me.
I see all social media. In the, in the student section, there was this big Dr. Town calling his heads that the students were waving.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a bit awkward. Yes.
This is not a mugger. And it's saying, you have a big head.
It wasn't too awkward. He tweeted about it. He was pretty proud of it. That was my mom.
Also, varsity soccer won their first two games, which is good. Volleyball had a fundraiser last weekend, and it was very successful, as did cheer. They had a car wash fundraiser that was successful. And then also this year, our, it started last spring, but there's sports affiliates. So Life of a Wildcat and a leader from a sport, we meet on Mondays and kind of talk about the highs and lows of our sports and how we can help each other to improve our sports. And something that's really cool that we're working on is getting other teams to support each other. So for example, I'm in CrossFit three, and we're going to town, let's say, like a volleyball match, and like the whole team is gonna go. So it's a team bonding for your team as well as you're supporting another team. So that's a pretty cool thing that we're working on.
And then just some additional things. LHS got a new turf this past summer as well as adding a new welcome sign to the front of the building. And then tomorrow night, Libertyville will host their open house, inviting parents just to come and meet with their students, teachers, and they're able to walk their kids' schedule and just kind of experience what their students' days are like. And then last week, students at Libertyville High School successfully viewed the solar eclipse during a school organized fire drill, with school provided solar eclipse glasses. And then lastly, LHS parking and morning traffic patterns are very successful. After the first day of school, most parents and students have adjusted easily to make the flow of traffic, to make the flow of traffic efficient in the mornings.
All right. Good deal. Good job.
All right. Oh, gosh. Hi, I'm Kelsey Corredo, and I'm a senior at Vernon Hills. And one cool thing, I guess, about me is I had the opportunity to travel to Uganda with Dr. G this past summer to visit our sister school of Africa, and I'll talk more about it all later.
Hi, I'm Hibba, and I'm a senior here at Vernon Hills High School. First, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to be here. I'm glad to be here. So first thing for today is the last spring, we kicked off a new student team called the Student Diversity Council, led by Dr. Gilliam and Mr. Young, which I'm also a part of. It's made up of students from every background, race, religion, and orientation. And its responsibilities include being a sounding board for school leadership, promote programs and initiatives, working with staff diversity teams to develop professional development for teachers, implementing educational programs for current students, and for example, in October, we'll prevent before the freshman transition program, finding ways to celebrate our school's rich diversity through new marketing campaigns and school-wide initiatives, collecting, analyzing, and acting on data. For example, last spring, the staff diversity team surveyed all the students regarding diversity perceptions. And this summer, our first meeting was a small team of our Student Diversity Council analyzed the data, and they created a report that was presented to all the staff at the start of the year. And in their reports, they shared areas of growth and strength, and the student-led panel discussed how the data played out in the daily lives of the students. It provided context to the numbers and gave teachers ideas about how they can deal with sensitive diversity matters and overall improve our school culture. In addition, our VHS school-wide campaign promoted positive, positive, promoted respect. This Friday, we did an activity about respect, and we had a meeting last Friday where the theme was respecting our peers and our staff. So lastly, due to our growing class sizes, we have our largest freshman class this year. We, so our resource areas got crowded, so we created the upper commons for juniors and seniors, which is a new resource area. And then we expanded the testing center, and our IRC is now used for freshman transition throughout the week.
Okay, so. So backing up to kind of some things, some highlights from over the summer. So there were 37 competitors that went to Anaheim, California back in June. I was one of them, and we competed for the Future Business Leaders of America. And like I said, 37 kids from our school went, and there were probably 12,000 kids from across the country there. And we had two teams placed in the top 10. We had Aparajtha Adaraju, you guys remember her last year? Ashwini Deshpada, Pravani Pandravada, and they placed eighth in Emerging Business Issues. And Michael Kokinas, Derek Zhang, and Oliver Leon placed second in Marketing. And they both got some cash prize, which is really cool. So way back to, I just want to talk about a little bit about the trip to Uganda. Like I said, we spent two weeks there. We actually had a layover in Dubai there and back, which was really cool. We visited St. Jerome Cove, which is the sister school that Dr. Swick started back in 2009. And while we were there, we gave them many gifts, such as school supplies. We refilled their library with books, gave them candy because they love that, and we gave them clothes as well. Some of the different campaigns that we've had were Dress a Girl Around the World, which is what the clothing classes here at Vernon Hills, they made dresses for all the little girls out of pillowcases. So each of them have got their own, and they had like pockets in them, and they were all really personalized, so they loved that. And then we also, one of the other girls that attended the trip, her dad donated soccer jerseys from AYSO, the organization that he works with, and so all the boys were able to get soccer jerseys. We taught them in their classes, and we had a Teacher Institute Day where we invited a bunch of other teachers from the surrounding area to come and to improve in their classrooms, to improve the education for all their children in their schools. And we also organized a field day. And just in summary, I took a lot of things, a lot of lessons from that trip, and I think that one of the most important ones that I learned was to be grateful for what I have and to be grateful for the opportunities that I am presented with in my everyday life here. We're so privileged and so lucky with what we have, and to see the kids there, just to be so happy and content with having nothing, I think is something really special and definitely an experience that I will carry with me for the rest of my life. So yeah, thank you.
Great job. Okay, so you are free to speak.
Or you're free to go.
I know your schedules tend to be quite packed, so you're also free to go, and you don't all have to do the same thing.
Okay, so it's like a quarter, it's 8:45, and you may have homework to go. So it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, you have to sit back down, okay? Because if you leave, John will go, okay? We can't be having that. Academic awards for winter and spring of 2017. The IHSA annually recognizes teams that earn a cumulative GPA of 3.0 or higher during their respective seasons. VHS award winners are girls basketball, girls bowling, competitive dance, girls gymnastics, boys swimming and diving, badminton, baseball, girls soccer, softball, boys tennis, girls track and field, boys track and field, boys volleyball, and girls water polo. The LHS award winners are girls badminton, boys baseball, boys gymnastics, girls soccer, girls softball, boys tennis, boys track and field, girls track and field, boys volleyball, boys water polo, girls swimming and diving, girls water polo, girls basketball, boys basketball, girls bowling, boys bowling, competitive cheerleading, competitive dance, girls gymnastics, boys swimming and diving, and boys wrestling. Great seasons academically and competitively for all those athletic teams at LHS and VHS. And then Sam Lustine, 2007 VHS graduate, and Clara Netis performed pictures at an exhibition with the Chicago Symphony Orchestra at Ravinia on July 11th. That's pretty cool. That is pretty cool. So congratulations to Sam. Okay, next on Superintendent's Report is the approval of the FY18 budget. As Pat indicated earlier, we've had at least two committee meetings where we talked about the budget in depth. We had two separate focused, budget-only focused special meetings this summer to focus in on the budget. So I would say we're right around eight to 10 hours on discussion on the budget. And Kevin or someone said earlier, maybe Mac, we've had very, very thorough discussions on the budget. So what we'd like to do tonight is a couple of things as we ask for final approval. We've gone through the budget hearing process, so we've hit all the legal steps that we need to do. Like to take one minute and do a summary of the budget talk, you know, kind of our budget talking points, if you will, or the major points. And then because we have some members of the public here tonight, we have a budget presentation that we'd like to share. We can kind of move through that. And then we'll get to the budget. So after two dedicated board meetings on the tentative D128 FY18 budget, which included extensive review, analysis, and adjustments, the Board of Administration tentatively agreed on an overall FY18 budget that reflects the following. As a basic operating principle, in the absence of extenuating circumstances and/or need, District 128 will not use cash reserves to fund normal operating expenses. Next, projected revenue forecast in the tentative budget was adjusted up to reflect additional forecast data and historical trends. Next, projected expense forecast in the tentative budget was adjusted down to reflect additional forecast data, historical trends, and additional expense reductions. Next, operations, the operations budget will be essentially balanced with a slight 960-some dollar offing between the two, but essentially will be balanced in that revenue equal expenses. Next, the operations budget will be monitored and reviewed during the fiscal year to assess actual revenue collection and expenditures, and will be adjusted as warranted to work toward a balanced, actual end-of-the-year budget. And finally, although the operations budget will be balanced, the overall FY18 budget will reflect a $12 million deficit as a result of the initial allocation towards LHS pool construction. However, that initial $12 million allocation toward the pool construction and future pool construction expenditures will, as planned, be paid out of existing reserves and as such will not result in the collection of additional constituent property taxes to meet LHS pool construction expenditures. So that's basically, you know, a budget summary of kind of where we were on the tentative budget and where we've come in that 10 hours of discussion on the budget. So Dan, why don't you lead us where we're here? We just wanted to hit a couple of things again, just to connect the dots on, as Pat said earlier, on what we do here. This is our AP Growth and Achievement Chart. It was updated recently. We've shared this with the community, and the board has seen this. We shared this with staff on opening day, but this is kind of where we live and what we do here. And if you look at the increases of the number of students taking AP classes, the number of exams they've taken, the numbers of students at three and four scores, and the percent of students at three and four scores, this is really phenomenal data that all of our district community should be proud of, including our feeder elementary districts. The numbers speak for themselves, but those are, you know, eye-popping numbers. So kudos to everyone and for our continued partnership together. Okay, Dan, can we go next? Okay, just off the niche rankings or niche rankings, whatever, we can't quite figure out the appropriate pronunciation, but we just wanted to point out several things that we shared with the community and the board last week. Niche is a national, is a national school ranking organizations of high schools and colleges. We were number one safest school district in Illinois, number three nationally. Ranked as the second-best district in Illinois, number 28 nationally. Last year, we were number one in the state, and Nutria was second. This year, Nutria's first, and we are second. Number two district with the best teachers in Illinois, number 10 nationally. No surprise there, right? We're doing great results, gotta have great teachers. And I think the next one is very telling as well. We were number four in best places to teach in Illinois and number eight nationally. Flip the next screen, Dan. And then just really quickly, there's the LHS and VHS data again. LHS ninth best public high school teachers in the nation, Vernon Hills 11th. LHS 11th best public school, high school in Illinois, 13th Vernon Hills. Right together, as they always are, sometimes changing places. And LHS 13th best college prep high school in Illinois. And Vernon Hills, number 17 best STEM high school in Illinois. So again, really, really powerful external data and external recognition that we don't go out and seek. And all of that success and those rankings are predicated by more and more of our students are being more and more successful, and that's really what that measures. Okay, Dan, next. Okay, so the agenda that we went down with the board that we're gonna go through pretty quickly here is we had some key school finance one-on-one points, some basic terminology that Dan will cover, the FY17 budget, FY17 performance, and the FY18 tentative budget. And then he will walk us through the FY18 budget process. Dan, am I on target there? Okay. So let us run through again for members of the public and folks that may watch us on tape. The district has responded to a number of financial challenges with some of these steps. We have reduced the number of district's office staff over the last two years significantly. We'll talk about that and the impact of that in a minute. The district has, as Pat indicated earlier, abated 18 and a half, $19 million over five years. It is, as far as we can determine through the best of our research, that in aggregate, the largest tax abatement that any school district has done in the state. We've done budget request reductions at the two buildings and district office. The part of the building, the budget that we control, that would be beyond salaries and benefits for employees. And then, of course, last year, the board, after some extensive research by Dr. Fleming... And then, of course, last year, the board, after some extensive research by Dr. Fleming and recommendations from administration, increased user fees on the revenue side for the first time, you know, probably in fifteen years. So can you go back? District office staff reductions. We've reduced district office level or district-level office staff by four employees or about twenty percent over the last two years. Select special education services previously outsourced are now provided by district staff, so we save some money in doing that internally. And this is probably our fourth or fifth summer that we did building shutdowns in the summer, where we closed the district down at four o'clock Thursday, and we do not reopen until Monday morning. Depending on how radically hot the summer may be, we will save in the neighborhood, I think, of thirty to forty-five thousand dollars during the summer by just doing that simple act. Okay, next. Okay, so personnel cost savings over the last two, two-and-a-half years. And again, these are aggregated across multiple years. The district office staff reductions resulted in savings of about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in salaries and benefits. Through the staffing process, which is really driven by the courses that students select, we reduced three point four FTE, or full-time equivalent of teachers. We can break that down into general ed staff at two point eight and special education staff point six. Roughly, the cost of that is about three hundred and forty-six, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And again, that's, you know, over a period of time. Retirements, I alluded to this earlier in my comments after the contract vote. With Al retiring, Yasmin retiring, and Marina retiring, and bringing in replacements in, we have saved this year about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Again, the difference between three people at the end of their careers with terminal degrees and newer folks, you know, coming into the district. And then seat all contract reductions, roughly fifty-five, fifty-six thousand dollars. And so total savings of around, you know, nine hundred and five thousand dollars. And some of that crosses multiple years. Okay, Dan. Okay, just, you know, real quickly, you know, we won't go through all of the detail, but we work very hard on group bidding contracts and purchases. Some folks may be aware that we do a joint bus bid with two of our four feeder districts. We do state bidding and purchasing. In facility space and services sharing, our communities, Vernon Hills and Liveryville, just should really be proud of what the two villages and the park districts and the high school district is doing, working together. None of us could run our complete programs without working with the others, but we share multiple spaces between all of those government bodies, which really is to be lauded. Education service cooperatives, of course, we're in the special education district of Lake County and the Lake County Technology High School. And then insurance and energy co-ops for health insurance, for property and liability insurance. And we're also in the energy cooperative. So looking at any place that we can leverage partnerships to provide services that we need to provide, but in a very cost-effective manner. Okay, Dan. So we've already talked about the property tax abatements. You know, one of the points that Pat makes in the one-on-one class is roughly that abatement was eighteen point five, eighteen point six million dollars for the owner of a six hundred thousand dollar home. That results in a reduction of property taxes to District one twenty-eight of about thirteen hundred dollars over that five-year period.
Let me, can I make sure I understand, you know, understand this? Potential property taxes, right?
Right, yes, yes.
So, yeah, I want to make sure, sure, thanks.
That's right, thank you, Kevin, that's a good clarification. Okay, Dan. So budget, budget reduction requests. And again, this is the part of the budget that the district will control for day-to-day operations and our two building principals would work on with their buildings. In two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we reduced those requests by about one point six million. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, another million. In two thousand sixteen, seventeen, about seven hundred thousand dollars. So if you add that up over that three-year period, roughly a three, you know, million-dollar reduction. And we've continued to hold that flat at a minimum part, John, and Marina before Tom. I've done a good, great job at the building level, I'm working with their staffs to, you know, just hold their budgets tight. Again, and that's the part of the budget that we can control every year. So the impact of a five million dollar budget reduction, and Pat, you actually talked about this, you know, I think much better than I do, but we actually wanted to take a calculation and see how that would affect all of us. I live in the school district as well, up in the Oak Grove area, and so I'm paying property taxes here just like everyone else. So the impact of a five million dollar budget reduction on a market value house about six hundred thousand dollars is about three hundred and sixty dollars. And, you know, it just gives you an idea. So when we talk about, you know, a five or ten or fifteen million dollar budget reduction, and you get up into ten or fifteen percent of the budget, it would be pretty catastrophic for the budget and some of the programs that we offer. And you can actually do kind of a value analysis on that. And that's all that's there for. Okay, next. Okay, chart of fees. Again, this is pretty small to read, except Stuart's probably on this closer on the camera. But this really outlines the fee increases that we did. The board, you know, looked at a number of comparables, and our fees were, you know, well within that band. So you've got districts that charge, for example, you know, astronomical fees for student parking, and then others that charge, like us, were charging less. So we tried to position ourselves, working with the board, kind of in the middle part of that group moving forward. But that's part of the attempt to, you know, share some of the other costs of the district in one area that we can raise some additional revenue. Okay, so reserves, this gives you a picture of reserves. This is a calculation that we use. This does not, Dan, if I remember correctly, this does not show early taxes, correct? So this is absence of early taxes, which are used to pay expenses forward. So the two thousand seventeen budget reserve would have been two thousand sixteen eighty-one, two thousand seventeen sixty-four or five, and then the projections moving forward. So we'll continue to, you know, update that. That's based on figures that are a year gone by, correct? And Dan will be doing an update of that over the year, so we have a better handle on that. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, so also go back to that slide. I believe, Dan, I communicated earlier on, two thousand eight projection will be adjusted as well, because we're not in a deficit of two thousand eighteen projection, right?
Correct.
So at the end of the day, this is just a little bit older slide, because we're doing education, right?
So this is, does this reflect the actual school activity or not?
No.
No, this is, this is just kind of revisiting those, the financial, finance one-on-one class, kind of.
Yeah.
And the slides that we've seen, really kind of seen almost every meeting for the last.
So your point, the point is, we balanced the budget this year, and that needs to be included here.
Right, so the two thousand eighteen bud, projection is, for the members of the public, we are balanced. We are not spending more.
Not making more expenses, right.
Exactly, so that's one big thing.
Yeah, which you'll see.
We worked tirelessly on and challenged Dan and Prentice, and we did it, right?
Or what I would, perhaps where I would position it would say is that, you know, not too long ago, this is what you guys were looking at as your future. I think it's changed now. So just reminding you of where you've been. And I think you've, you've made positive change for the future. So we're going to see.
Very well with that, Dan.
All right, let me just, so this was the historical slide. It's not updated.
Correct.
All right, so let's just make sure, one of two things, either we pull the slide from this deck or we update this slide to indicate it's not current. All right, now, I don't want anybody to see this slide on TV or on the website to say that as of today, these numbers are what we currently have. But that's not.
The numbers will be updated as soon as we approve the budget. So then we'll, I'll do the numbers again, this is just.
But, yeah, you're going to have a little time to be able to do projections for you, really, like multiple.
I'm okay with that, Dan, but honestly, I think we need to pull the slide, because what we know today is we were a little favorable last year, and we were not out of balance in the budget this year. And so all the projections we did last year, we've done better than. I don't want, I don't want anybody to think that we're perpetuating last year's story, when in fact, the story has changed.
And, and the trajectory on the pool spending is different, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's.
Right.
We understand, we don't.
Yeah.
So I think, I think what we say to this again, because there's audio with video, obviously, is this is a historical slide that was an analysis that showed us the path that we were on. And as Dan stated, the path that we will now be on, with some of the adjustments we made, will look different from this. And actually, we can do a comparative contrast with that at some point.
And, and I think particularly, I think this slide was used in conjunction with the next slide to show the contrast of the property tax freeze.
Yeah.
When that was talked about. So this slide kind of corresponds to the one you'll see two slides later, showing with the freeze, this is how it changes. At the time, that was a big, a big concern, kind of going through and kind of looking at. So that's why I think this was really tied to, was seeing also, you know, that effect of potential property taxes.
Well, if it's more helpful, we can just roll through those slides, get familiar with updating that. So why don't you go to the next one? Go ahead, just keep going.
Again, this was a historical one.
Yeah. And then we'll update reserves with freeze. Okay, in the next twenty-four months, we're going to negotiate a new teacher contract. And we'll be starting to meet with the union in October. We'll review the user fees. We'll continue to flatline our annual budget, part of the budget and fee control. And we'll continue to look at efficiencies in district and building, cost reductions where we can. So those, and of course, the budget discussion was a big part of that. So, Dan, next.
All right, before we move on, can I add one more thing? Because I think we talked about this as well. I think in the next twenty-four months, we'll also communicate with the public what our reserve is going to be used for. Because I think one of the big unknowns is this reserve, what it is. And there certainly is a plan that's been put in place by this board of why the reserve is what it is and what it potentially could be used for. Again, we've had a lot of discussions. Nothing's been finalized, but I suspect easily in the next twenty-four months, we'll have a mature policy of that much sooner.
I asked a question. This reserve you're talking about, as of August, as of August, what was, what was the dollar reserve level?
You know, I don't have the number in front of me, but I want to say the number was in the realm, not including early taxes, of about eighty million.
Yeah, Mr. Ravina, I think we're going to wait for the audit financials on that, actually. So before we do anything, I think.
Listen, I'm going to tell you one thing. You guys talk about reserves and the abatements, but let's, let's keep one thing in mind. It was paid at eighteen million, you cut it over tax, that's eighteen million.
Let's keep, continue. Well, just, we'll, we'll continue, Dan, you can continue, but I'll just make one comment, because I know Pat would make that comment. There are a number of districts, school districts in the state, that have substantial reserves, and none of them have chosen to give any of that money back to their public. So the board should be commended for their work in terms of making that decision moving forward. So, Dan, take us forward.
All right, so when kind of looking at the budget, so right now, we're talking about money that we're going to be coming in, money that's going to be spent just kind of this year. Really, we've talked about this before, but really, just to set really a term, so we know what we're talking about. And that, really, that term is what we're talking about, is operating funds, okay? And what do we mean when we're talking about operating funds? So that we're clear, so essentially, we take all funds. We have, you know, several different funds that were, that is, fund accounting is what school accounting is, really. And what we do is we take away Fund Thirty, which is our debt service, so that we're comparing apples to apples. And the other thing that we're going to pull out is the LHS pool, right? It's been up, we talked about the update in the cash flow, you know, we're talking twenty, twenty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars for the pool. But that's kind of a one-time thing, that's not an annual thing that you do. So that really should be removed from trying to see how are, how are our day-to-day operations changing? And so when we're, that's what the term we're going to be using is operating funds. Really think about it as your regular business operations. So before I can really go into what your fiscal year eighteen budget is, I kind of need to step back for a second to talk about the fiscal year seventeen budget, just so you know kind of where you were. The operating budget for that year had about a three point four million dollar deficit in there. Again, just a reminder, this is operating, so it's not going to include the pool, it's not going to include the debt service. You had a bond payment that you paid off of six million or something. That, that stuff's not counted, because we're trying to compare apples to apples. All right, so for the fiscal year how did it perform, you know, we're going through our audit literally right now. It's been, been a busy, busy six days so far. But we're in the throes of that right now, but, you know, unaudited actuals for the year, you actually ended up with a three point, call it three million dollar surplus. So, you know, you're talking a fair swing there, six, six and a half million dollars or so. So, so we've talked about essentially what that will boil down to is, on the revenue side, you had a hundred and three percent revenues compared to budget, meaning you budgeted for a certain number, you got a hundred and three percent of that number. Now, what, what happened there really is going to be your local sources. You had a hundred and three percent of your local sources, money that comes from the community right here. So let's look at your, how your sources of revenue actually shake out from the district. Sorry, the, my font sizes weren't quite adjusted for this room, they're for kind of a smaller room. But if you can see there, local sources represent ninety-five percent of the revenue. So ninety-five percent of the revenue that funds this district and the people, the salaries, the programming that you do, comes from this community right here in the terms of property taxes, to the tune of, property taxes are approximately eighty-eight percent. The rest of it comes from other, other local sources, could be student fees, could be all kinds of, all kinds of things that really are from this community. State sources represent a very small amount, roughly four percent. And federal is that little sliver that's not barely one percent. I couldn't even get the pie chart to show me that figure. It was so small, it wouldn't even show it as a, as a label. So that was on the revenue side. So in breaking those down, you know, looking at the various sources, so your three main sources of revenue are the local sources, most of it's property taxes, state sources, and federal sources. Now, you know, we don't have that many different sources of revenue. Just like any, perhaps any person, the, the number of ways you get money in is not, there's not a whole lot of sources of revenue. Same, same with us, we're, we're kind of limited in our sources of revenue. So local property taxes came in higher, the tax receipts were higher than what was, what was anticipated at the time. The state coming in a little bit under was, you know, no surprise. There's some financial constraints in the state, some late payments from the state. And then federal sources had a pretty big increase, you know, relatively speaking, they're a very small part of our budget, but idea, the idea shares. So seat all, our special education district of Lake County, they get federal money, and they give some of it to us, and they, they keep some of it. Well, they changed to giving more to us than they had in the past, and we get, and they keep less. So that affected it. Also, room and board, which is a federal source of revenue, that was a pretty substantial increase, but that was really due to one more kid in that program. So, you know, sometimes you can talk about one more kid, it can cost you easily a hundred thousand dollars in the special, in the special A area, depending on the services that that student really needs. This is one, one time that I've seen the revenue has kind of corresponded to that. So all in all, really, when you're looking at everything, your property taxes came in higher than expected, because that's most of your revenue. Now, on the expenditure side, what happened is really, you didn't spend your whole budget. Ninety-five percent was spent. So, you know, that's, you know, you're getting closer, you know, you want that to be closer to a hundred. It's better that it's a, that it's under a hundred than being over. So really, what happened there, just to give you a breakdown, to see how, how your money is spent, you know, sixty or fifty-six percent on salaries, benefits are associated with that. So you could, you know, you could, or you could add those together, sixty-seven percent on the employees that you have here. Purchased services is a bit bigger chunk, because in this district, you have contracted for busing, for facilities, for food service, but all of those are people, too. At the end of the day, there are people that are here, and, you know, they're largely considered part of this community. And so you're talking, the vast majority of your budget is spent on the people that are here, day in and day out, serving the students that show up. And so that, that's very typical in school districts, your service organization, where it's the people that are here that we're employing to serve, or we're engaging with a company to employ people to serve. But the other parts that you've seen, supplies, capital, and other objects. Other object just basically means if it doesn't fall in one of those other groups, it goes in other. You know, that's mostly going to be probably tuition payments, dues and fees, stuff like that. So, but it's relatively small comparatively. So what happened, you know, if you break it down by object, by like the things that you spend money on, the types of things, salaries are, you know, they're going to be your biggest chunk, but there wasn't really anything that stuck out, that came in a bit under ninety-eight point two percent of budget. So now, benefits came in a little bit, under medical insurance was under I R F T. Medical insurance was under IMRFT. Those were under what was budgeted. Purchase services did tick over in, in being over budget. That was due to an ERO payment that was higher than anticipated, even though ERO technically is, should be a benefit charge, but that's kind of how it was at least accounted and budgeted for going forward. You won't, there is no ERO anymore, so that won't apply. Supplies that went under, we've talked several times that a lot of that is really for people, if they, if they really need it, they buy it. But if they don't really need it, at the end of the day, they don't buy it. This is something I've seen in my other, in previous districts, repeated over and over again, which I think is, is a, is a sign of, you know, trying to be fiscally responsible, I think. Another thing that to reflect is the utilities. So some of the changes that you guys have made in terms of your, your, thank you, yeah, lighting and the energy, the chiller thing. Yeah, that, sorry. Those, those types of things have resulted in spending less on, less on utilities, electricity, gas. And also the prices for those have been pretty good too. Now, that doesn't mean that those won't go up in the future. And, you know, you're going to build, you know, a $21 million pool, surprise, surprise, you're going to have to heat that thing and put electricity in it. So that's going to impact your budget in the future, just not yet. So those, those are really supplies. Capital outlay is going to be your biggest area where those are some of the big, you know, the most stark numbers to say essentially, there was projects that just, that were deferred for a variety of different reasons. But really, that's where you're seeing your 95% coming in total budget is really in the capital projects. You know, that was, there was a lot of planning going on for the pool and so timing of some things. The pool is not part of this, right? So, but I mean, during that year, there was a lot of planning for that. So, you know, for a variety of reasons, that, that was a low point for sure. You know, that's not something I see us repeating. We've talked about that as well. So that's last year's performance. Now trying to step in and kind of look at, at this point, we're presenting to you is the final budget. That's gone through several versions and I'll kind of show you a little bit of what, what that's having. All right. So just to make sure we're clear what we're understanding, if just we're not, if we're not sure what we're meaning. A budget really is an estimate, all right? We're estimating here. We're guessing. We try to be good at guessing. And, you know, but we're never going to be done on. My, my goal is to try to make, make sure we're guessing as good as we can. And we're going to, we're going to get better at guessing than we have been. And we're, even now, we're going to get better and better at that. So the biggest thing I want, I'd like for you to take away is that your operating budget is balanced. I think that is a huge success to have because a year ago, that was not the situation you were facing. And so I think that's great. The board has looked at a lot of detail. And we, you know, you guys know, I don't need to tell you what, what you've been through the last two months, at least what I've seen. But that's been a lot of work. So here's your really look at your operating budget, right? Again, this is not going to include the pool. Sorry, that slide should have been updated to 12 million. You know, we had originally thought the cash flow, right, $21 million project spread over a few fiscal years. We originally thought there was going to be about 8 million cash flow in fiscal year routine. Turns out, really because of the site work that we're going to talk about in just a couple of minutes, getting, getting that moving, we think the range is going to be a bit higher for this fiscal year. But, you know, we're not adding 4 million to the cost of the project. That's not at all what's happening. This is just about a, like a timing thing about when we actually end up spending the money. But looking at operating, your revenues and expenditures are balanced, meaning you are, the budgeted revenues are equal or more than your budgeted expenditures. To the tune of $946, granted, it's very close, but it is, there is a small surplus there in the budget. Just for reference, the first tentative budget that you guys saw had a $3.7 million deficit. The second version you saw had a $1.5 million deficit. And so now you, and you've, this was at the committee meeting. So the numbers haven't really changed. It is seen as having a balanced budget.
Okay, let's be clear with that. That's, that's not pretty soon. The first budget we saw in this budget cycle was $3.7 million on business.
Correct.
Second budget we saw in this budget cycle was $1.5 million.
Correct.
After a third discussion, it's now balanced.
Correct. And I'm not saying that's a repeatable thing. Don't think you're going to prove 1.5 like we could do this three more times and it's just going to get better and better. There's a, yeah, there's an asymptote. There's an asymptote that you already too. Yeah. So that's, that's really your operating budget in a nutshell. I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of what, what's going on there. So the revenue, right? What changed? Just, just so, so you know what's happened over the last few meetings we've had. So we've talked about a few meetings on Ju-, or July 18th, August 7th, and again on August 14th, we've had several revisions. And all of those have been adjusting our revenue, our revenue assumptions and budget up. So you can see that, that effect has happened to mitigate the, mitigate the budget deficit. And then on the expenditure side, again, broken up by objects. So you can see again, from July 18th to August 7th to August 14th, these meetings that we've had, public meetings that we've had, that we've been going through and doing this, oh, sorry. 85 million on 83.7, on 80, 83, call it 83.5, to really get that balance in line. So that's kind of what, what, what happened between the 3.7 tentative budget and the final one that you're seeing.
Hey, can you go back to the revenue, please, really quick?
Yes. No, the only thing, I want to just make sure everybody, this does not mean we are increasing property taxes by 1.8 million magically. This simply means that the data became a little bit more refined. We looked at trends. We looked at some additional analysis. Management talked a little bit further, got more comfortable with a closer assessment.
Absolutely.
Is that true?
Yeah, it's more a closer reflection of what is actually.
What we expect to collect in property taxes issue.
Not that we're taking them off.
What's the 79.5 compared to, remind me, the local sources, 79.5 compared to last year?
What was the 79.5 compared to last year?
It's about the same.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have that. I'll have that.
You're forecasting revenues to be equal to last year.
Uh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, that's a slide in the future, sorry, that I'll have for you. Uh, like here. So, so comparing, like what changed, right? So comparing, how did, how did it change from the budget and then how did it change the actuals? So that right column is really what you're talking about. The percent, the 0% is essentially having a flat revenue assumption from what we got last year, which is a 3% increase to what the budget was last year. Again, just showing what those, what those changes have looked like there. So yeah, that's exactly what, what we mentioned. That's on the revenue side. Now looking at the same thing on the expenditure side is by object, again, those different categories. The total 4%. If most of your budget is salaries and benefits, that lets you believe that your budget at the end of the day will be more reflective of what is happening with salaries and benefits. So we've talked about that. We've talked about trends. We've seen those trends and where those have been heading. And so those are kind of based on the numbers that are there. And so the one adjustment that you may see is, is the capital outlay. You know, we're kind of, last year was a down year in that. So we're kind of reverting back to where we've kind of been with capital outlays. So that, that's something to note. The budget is technically operating, on an operating, or on an operating basis, your budget is smaller than what it was last year. But it does, it does assume that you, you're going to be spending more than you did last year. And that really is the information that I have for you for your, the final budget. You know, we have the report. That's 30 pages on the website. That's not super readable. Tried to boil that down into a readable portion for you. Just so you know, the only thing that changed since the last time we talked is no total numbers have changed. But essentially, the annual capital that we, that we do, instead of it being in Fund 60, I've moved it to Fund 20. And now the only thing that's in Fund 60 is the pool. It'll be much easier to track and compare on a year-to-year basis. Putting the big one-time projects in capital 6, in Fund 60. And our annual stuff that we do, and, you know, the annual kind of stuff that we do every year in Fund 20 will help us going forward. But that had no net change. It was just, you know, down in one and up in the other.
I agree. That's good.
So.
Okay, so I have one request. At, at FNF next time, can we see, so the 5.472 on the capital outlay there, right? Can we see the, I want to see the buildup to that, just so we can track it. Because, you know, truthfully.
What do you mean by buildup? Just for the audience?
So here's what I, here's what I imagine. You probably have 10 or 15 or 20 things that are part of that 5.5 million dollar spend. And then there's probably a final bucket of other that actually gets the total to 5.5 million, right? So that next year, we can very clearly, yeah, sorry. Next year, we can very clearly say, we did these projects, these projects, these projects. Not this one. So we saved whatever. Or instead of this one, we did a different one. I just want to be able to have a very crisp conversation next year when we say, what did we plan to spend it on? What did we actually?
Well, the other thing we committed to was on a quarterly basis, having a review. Because as you go, first quarter, second quarter, third, instead of all of a sudden, oh, hey, at the end of the year, this is where we came in. Then you all, with our guidance or whatever, can go ahead and make the necessary decisions, may make changes or change course throughout the year. Maybe do something else, do something differently, but have a better idea of how are we tracking towards that budget? And having not every, every single capital project, but the key ones laid out, then we can kind of just see where do we stand.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, doesn't mean we're going to do everything that's on the list. We may make a conscious decision that says we thought something was going to break and it didn't break. So therefore, we don't have to spend the money. We can then make a decision, do we either save the money or spend it on something else? But it'll be real clear what's going on. Okay?
And that list goes back to really kind of the rolling cap. Well, it really goes back to the rolling capital plan that, you know, Alex worked with us on, you know, 10 or 12 years. Alex Delapoli 10 or 12 years ago and really put us in an organ, you know, a year-by-year organizational structure to deal with capital projects on a regular basis to keep us in front of, you know, potential problems. So, okay?
All right, great summary, John. All right, Dan.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the 2017-18 fiscal budget as per NAM?
So.
Discussion?
Second.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thanks, Jim. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Louis.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Mauer.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
If I may, just a reminder, there is a, there is a budget cover sheet that every single board member needs to sign. There's three originals. Please just make sure that you sign those before you go.
Okay.
Can I just, I want to commend Dan because again, two years into this, this has been the easiest for me to understand. I think it's going to be easier for the community to understand how to follow this. He laid it out very simply. I think it's going to help us better manage this. But huge, quick impact. So thank you.
Yeah, and I, I would just say, if it wasn't for the business office staff that you have and all in the administrative team you have around so they can deal with my millions, my million of questions, this would not be as successful. So it really is, it's really a big team effort.
We want you asking the million of questions. All right, okay.
Okay. LHS Student Parking, in the interest of the hour, you can briefly.
Yeah, I, I will. The students included parking earlier and Tom can certainly comment on this. But the initial plan that was developed with some tweaks has really resulted in the students being in the building, you know, before the start of school and really the lot being, and the two drives being virtually empty moving forward. Tom and his team, along with LPB, will continue to monitor that. I do want to say that the first week I drove that lot twice myself, same road I used to drive my daughters at for five years. And the time getting up on Libertyville Garfield in 176 and in the parking lot to that place was essentially the same as it was before at the same time. And Tom and his team are out there. So we'll continue to monitor that moving forward. And, you know, they've started to do some tangible work in the front of the building, started moving trees. You're going to get a little bit more information tonight. And then we'll move forward. So we'll continue to monitor that, review that probably a couple of times this year. And then we will work on a parking plan as part of case two when we talk with the village, you know, over the course of the year. So, Tom, anything to add, Dan?
No, the, the long time LHS folks tell me that the traffic on campus is actually moving better than it ever has. And that the traffic in the parking lot is actually safer because of only two routes in and out. So that's a good thing. And we also, I just continue to commend all the students who are riding the bus. Our bus ridership is up from last year. We keep track every day of number of kids on all the buses. I think the last stat I saw was up about 125 to 140 students per day than where we were at this time last year. And also, our bike ridership is very high now. Obviously, that may drop a little when the weather turns. But right now, that's conscious choices that students and families are making and we certainly appreciate that.
So, and just remember. kayak riders?
I haven't seen any of them yet.
Tom, Tom actually. Day, day one. Tom actually tried that. Or he's going to try that at some point. So the significance of the 125-plus bus riders is that those kids, because they're riding the bus, are one and a half miles or more from school, which is the, kind of the state criteria to be a bus rider unless there's a hazard along the way. So those are likely young kids who would have been dropped off or driven themselves, you know, in past years. So that's 125 cars that kind of off the road down, out of, out of the lot. So. But we'll continue to do, you know, periodic updates on that. And I just want the board and the community to be aware that Tom and his team and the Libertyville Police Department will make any adjustments that they think they need to make. It'll make it better, safer along the way. We're not hesitant to do that.
Yeah, we're literally out there every morning and afternoon and every single day talking about it. Just kind of real-time information and what we're seeing and.
Okay, great job. Okay, okay, can I move on? LHS pool project, the update is really B and C. So we're going to dive right into that, given the fact that it's already 9:30. But it's starting to get exciting because we're starting to do work there. So on B, we have a bid recommendation for earthwork. And Mark and Dan, you want to take us up? And we've got one of our colleagues here from Gilbein, now tonight, our construction manager.
Dan Sullivan with Gilbein Zilling Company.
Well, can you turn that light up a little bit?
Sure. So I was just going to give a quick update as far as where the bidding is at right now.
This one?
Okay. So where we're at, everything is out to bid currently. We did start the bidding process a little bit later due to some of the city processes. But the good news is bidding is on schedule. The project bids that we're presenting today will, if they're approved, will keep the project on schedule so that we can get the site demolition and excavation and all the utilities relocated to keep the project going. So with that, the two bid packages that we do have are the bid package 31A for the earthwork. And essentially, that's the, the site demolition, that's degrading, and the excavation for the pool and foundations itself. So again, that's the, one of the first things that needs to get done to get the site ready. The other bid package is for bid Patrick, bid package 33A, which is the site utilities. Again, that needs to be relocated before we can start the excavation for the pool. So the good news is the bids did come in under budget, so under what our estimate was. So right now, we're on track for the previous estimate. We are, the bids as a total are about 32,000 less than what our, what our estimate was. So bid package 31A for the earthwork project, right now, we're recommending Berger excavating contractors. Their base bid amount was $1,020,000. One thing to note is that they didn't have the low base bid amount, but their base bid plus the alternate. And the alternate is for demoing the admin building. So that was a discussion that Mark and, and Dan and I had regarding that being something that wanted to be proceeded with. So that is why Berger is being recommended as the, the earthwork bid package. And then also with bid package 33A for the site utilities, Berger is also a low bid on that. So they will be low on both the base bid and the base bid plus the alternate. So those are the two bid packages we're recommending. As far as where we're going from here, September 1st, we'll be getting another round of bids. And then the second, the third round of bids will be on September 8th. So we're hoping on September 11th to bring some more bid packages for you guys to approve, as well as on the 25th.
So when will the excavation start?
It's scheduled, yeah, mobilization is scheduled for September 20th.
Just if I can add a couple of points, just to give context to some of this. Some of this information is not even 12 hours old yet, so it's been a fun day. I just want to let you know, just so that we're clear, if we were just doing the base bid, Berger was not the lowest. But when you include the alternate that we're looking to do, that made them the lowest when you consider both. Because there was a huge variance in basically alternate one. That was, that was a big variance. And the, the funds to pay for alternate one are not part of the pool project. They did that as an alternate to try to get economies of scale because people are already going to be on site doing a bunch of digging. Like might as well just throw in this other thing. Those funds are getting paid from the cap, annual capital. So that's different, just so you know. To what he said, the, the bids are coming in just fine technically. To what he said, the bids are coming in just fine technically. The earthwork came in about 5% over the estimate, but the site utilities came in 90% under, so we're tracking that very carefully, but so far, so good. Just to give you context, we're about, we got about 10% of our bids so far, okay? Things look good so far. I've been in a similar situation where I've had 10% of my bids and they've been like 10, 15% over, so we're in much better position than that. We still have 90% to go, okay? It's just to give you context. You're not necessarily out of the woods yet for what bids are gonna come out, but so far, so far, so good for sure. But I think two weeks from now, we'll know exactly where we stand, and even if you were awarding these bids tonight and we come to a situation two weeks from now realizing, oh no, the cost came in much, much higher than we ever thought, we need to rethink this whole thing, we can stop, essentially you'll pay some fees for the costs that have been incurred, but they're gonna be relatively minor compared to, you know, the million, the million and a half you're looking at right now. I just wanted to give you that, that context, and then just a reminder that at the September 11th meeting, that's again where we'll be looking towards having perhaps a special meeting to accept some of those other contracts, that we wanna kind of move the concrete and I don't remember the other trade, but there's a few more trades that we wanna kind of mobilize sooner to keep with that schedule and add this in more debt.
So, we just schedule a special meeting between the-
That's fine. Just to deal with that.
You guys have any other questions for Dan?
I do, just so I understand, um, the bid package that you're combining the two, if the other bidders all did the same, that's what made it a little higher rate, so that-
I'm sorry, did you say-
Sorry, and I'm sorry, I have to find it. So, you're saying that the base bid came in higher except that we combined it with the alternate than the total, so the other bidders were also doing the alternate as well?
Correct, yeah, and those are all-
Bottom line, comparing apples to apples.
But you're correct, yeah, but everybody-
Correct, you have those, they're in the packet online, they just went online today
because we just got the data today, but it's all there for you.
And the alternate was something that we really wanted to do, assuming the price was kind of coming in bits for a minute.
No, get it down.
Okay, is there a, we need two-
I got one more question. I did my math, but I just wanted to double check. Do you have the, you gave the percentages, over and under, do you have the exact numbers that the estimates originally were?
Yes, sure, the earthwork, I have the exact number of the estimate for there, 967,000, let's just call it that, there's-
Okay, that's good.
And then for site utilities, the estimate there was 454,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the bid from Berger for earthwork and alternate one?
So who?
One B, one B, please.
One B, yes.
In the amount of, how much?
1,020,000. 1,020,000.
It's actually, that's, the base is 1,020?
Plus 27,000, yeah, so 1,047,000.
1,047,000, is that right? Okay, all right, so again, a motion to accept the bid from Berger Construction for the earthwork and alternate 1B in the amount of 1,047,000.
47,000.
47,000, sorry.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mauer. Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Now, is there a motion to accept the bid from Berger Construction for site utilities in the amount of, how much, Dan?
393,000.
393,000.
So who?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
We're building a pool.
Start digging.
At least they go home.
We're rolling.
Wait, wait, what's she, did I hear constructions not just start till November?
That was November.
Okay. Continue, break. Okay, bring your memorial update, set the board a picture of the whole living ground. So, Mark?
Uh, they started last week at Bran Memorial, dug the hole, footing's in, foundation is in for the wall, has been backfilled. We have masonry materials on site as of today, and then we'll start constructing it this week. Thank you.
Exciting, and we should be done in time for the 100th anniversary celebration of our living grounds, so that's good. In fact, we will be done by November of the heart.
With your approval, with the brown plaque is the one thing that's gonna be close to the date.
They can always be put up there.
They can always be put up there.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Dan, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. All right, let me, let me see if I can do like the one-minute version of everything that's happened in the last 48 hours of Springfield, because things have changed since we arrived here tonight, okay? Moving into today, legislators were called back, and they went into caucus and they actually discussed the compromise school funding package that was worked out by the four leaders and ostensibly, tentatively approved by the governor last week, okay? So, they came out of caucus and they put that, they had debate, and they ultimately put that to a vote, and it was voted down substantially. They broke into caucus again, they came back out, and they actually made an attempt to override the governor's veto of Senate Bill 1, okay? That was not successful. They had to have 71 votes to override. So, they caucused again, and then they came back out and they voted once again on the compromise package, and the compromise package actually passed with 73 or 74 votes. So, we had about a 30-person swing after they got. So, we will be doing analysis on that, but our board and I also try and work with our feeder superintendents, so, you know, they're aware of impacts, Alani at District 68 and Guy Schumacher at 70, Nick Brown at 73, and Jenny Boycheck over at Runabout. So, we've been communicating all day today, but this contains an adequacy component in it for our property taxes, so I'll have more information, you know, to you. You've kind of got the lay of the land on that, but I'll have more information to share at the committee meeting, you know, when we actually do some more calculations and see how that might work out. So, for districts that are over 110% adequacy, that could have a fairly substantial impact on them versus had we done a two-year property tax freeze. But at the end of the day, in the debate, that was not an option, so it wasn't, okay, if you don't like adequacy, then what about property tax freeze? There was some discussion earlier in the day that that is where it was heading, and legislators started to reach out to the superintendents and et cetera, but that at some point was kind of removed from the table. So, the adequacy piece really deals with property taxes moving forward, so we do have a school funding formula. Now we get some more detail and we'll be sharing that out, okay? Questions?
None.
Dan, what a run. And then we had two FOIA requests. The first one was on 8/117 from Rich Cortez, 55 Katrina Lane, Sleepy Hollow, Illinois, 60018. He requested 12 years of teacher salary schedules for 2006-7 through 2007-18, and 12 years of teacher assistant salary schedules for 2006 through 2017-18. Follow-up responsibility was Bryant's, and we responded on 8/10, approximately one hour. And the second FOIA request this month was from Jim Dovisell, and we only have a phone number and email from him, the district's hiring policies for volunteer workers, and number two, the district's policies when a volunteer's background check comes back with arrests but no conviction. Bryant, again, had follow-up responsibility. We responded on 8/11/17, and Bryant spent about one quarter of an hour doing that. So, Pat, with that, it concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Consent vote agenda is listed. We reviewed it earlier this month, and committee can ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as shown.
So who?
Second.
Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee, Chairperson Mauer.
Okay, we have just two things. First thing is employment of employees, and these are appointments that were made after the committee meeting, so we're looking for a motion to approve those as listed. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, next we have additional tour requests, so there are two trips listed. We're looking for a motion to approve those. So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. The one related to climbing in Baraboo, how's the insurance work on that? Again, just, you're climbing, it's a little risky, what's our liability or that?
Well, they'd be covered like any other field trip.
Just like you're riding, like-
Yeah, just like if they were riding on a bus to Springfield in the Capitol and, God forbid we had those-
You know, need something different for climbing rocks.
Yeah, again, it's a little bit, it's kind of like-
I believe we need a special ride.
Kind of like a baseball pitcher, they don't let them go ride motorcycles.
As long as it's district-sponsored, it's covered under our existing policies.
This is a trick that they've done annually for a number of years, so if you've done this, that's-
I think it's a good question.
Yeah.
Very good question.
It's a little bit different than, well, whatever, going on a sightseeing trip to see the Chicago something.
Thank you. Okay, any other question? Hearing, now roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, Facilities and Finance, Chairperson Batson.
Thank you. We have four items here. First is the approval of an additional financial institution for investments. This is adding Fifth Third Securities to our pool of banks that we use for investments. I think that's-
I make a motion that we approve adding Fifth Third Securities to our group of investors.
Second.
Any other discussion? We talked about this in committee earlier in the month, so FOIA, roll call, please.
Luz.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Okay, we have a request motion for legal representation for, what does this stand for, the Tax Appeal, Property Tax Appeal Board and Board of Review issues.
Dan, the Attorney General.
Uh, yeah, that's, uh, they shall name this.
Scott Nemeth.
Yeah, Scott Nemeth.
I make the motion that we use Scott Nemeth as legal counsel for PTI and Board of Review. Second.
Any other discussion? Again, this was reviewed in committee earlier in the month, so roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. We have two bid recommendations, the gymnastics floor exercise system for Libertyville High School.
Yes, I have proposed motion for the Board of Education. Does the Board of Education accept base bid from Athletic Equipment Source of St. Charles, Illinois, in the amount of 32,600 for the gymnastics floor exercise system at Libertyville High School?
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, please.
Move to approve as described.
Second.
Any other questions?
So, just to clarify, that was only one bid, if I recall, right?
Correct, yes, it was one.
And why was it one bid? That's important.
The gymnastics floor, we, is a specialized flooring, and so through research of the athletic department, they researched all the floors and we wrote bid specs for the most quality floor that was out, and we welcomed bidders to bid on the product, and we only received one bid.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We have a roll call, please.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
We have two bid recommendations, the gymnastics floor exercise system for Libertyville High School.
Yes, I have proposed motion for the Board of Education. Does the Board of Education accept base bid from Athletic Equipment Source of St. Charles, Illinois, in the amount of 32,600 for the gymnastics floor exercise system at Libertyville High School?
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, please.
Move to approve as described.
Any other questions?
So, just to clarify, that was only one bid, if I recall, right?
Correct, yes, it was one.
And why was it one bid?
Yeah.
That's important.
The gymnastics floor, we, is a specialized flooring, and so through research of the athletic department, they researched all the floors and we wrote bid specs for the most quality floor that was out, and we welcomed bidders to bid on the product, and we only received one bid.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?